Get there. So welcome. This is our final scheduled budget work session. Your next regularly scheduled meeting, we intend to present a recommended budget with an accompanying message. At the first meeting in June, we will hold a public hearing on the budget move to adoption at the second meeting of June. Today, we'll talk briefly about what you have in your packet. From there, we'll move to fire districts and requested rate increases. We have two fire districts that have requested tax rate increases. Here from our education partners. We'll have a discussion of community investments and then have a budget discussion and good strategies to balance fiscal year twenty five budget. So you have a sizable packet of information today. In your folder, you will find a list of proposed community investment awards through our community investment programs. There is a memo from my office with answers to questions raised at or since our last work session. There are presentations and related information from each of our three education partners, A B Tech, municipal city schools, combined county schools. There's a one pager with a comparison of education funding across the county sample that includes graphs with and without capital project funding. You have a handout with Buncombe County turnover data provided by our H R director, Sharon Burke. And you also have requests for the company information from the two fire districts we'll be hearing from today. I'll give you a minute or two to review and see if you have any questions before we proceed. Okay, so we have two districts requesting tax rate increases with the remainder of departments preferring to remain at the same rate and use natural growth for additional revenue. As usual, salaries and equipment are the primary drivers for fire districts as well as facility maintenance and repair. Here are the tax rates for the current year, the requested rate for fiscal year twenty five, and the county's recommended rate. We will discuss the two districts recommending changes over the next two slides. They're also here today to speak to you about their requests. So Fairview is requesting an increase of one point five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of three hundred sixty thousand, six hundred twenty three dollars above natural growth. They reduced their initial request after working with the county. This revenue was needed for engine refurbishment and to begin work on their main station remodel. And the county is in support of this request to increase. And Chief Jones is here today to speak to their request or answer any questions.
Good morning, commissioners. Again, for those that might not know me too well, I'm Scott Jones, I'm chief of Fairview. We're requesting your support in increasing our fire tax rate for two different projects. The major project is a much-needed renovation in addition to our main station. The last time it was actually underwent like a major addition was back in nineteen ninety seven. So at that time, we didn't have any paid personnel unless that was the reason for the addition. At that time, we didn't have any living quarters, so to speak. And as you all know, how Fairview has grown since nineteen ninety seven, outside of the normal regular maintenance, you know, taking major renovations, we've not touched that section per se. Our main station right now, we had a small, very small room for physical fitness due to our growth. It's our physical fitness equipment's got pushed out into an empty bay, so they're out there in summer. We try to stress physical fitness on all of our firefighters. They're out there in a hot bay trying to remain physically fit for their jobs. We currently don't have adequate restrooms and showers for all the staff that we have. We've got, it's basically a total of four restrooms in our station currently, two of which are basically considered to be public restrooms when they're connected to our meat rooms. They have no showers in them. The other two restrooms are, we have basically two showers in two of those restrooms for our staff of eleven people. So we come back from a fire or they come in contact with something, they need to shower. There's basically a line trying to get in the restroom and take a shower. So the other thing that we don't have is a decon room to where if they did come in contact with a hazardous chemical or some type of bloodborne pathogens where they need to decon. We decon them on scene, but when they come back to the station, they need to do some type of deep clean, take a shower. This new addition is going to have a decon room in it. Right now, we don't have that. So the main thing is to add additional showers as well as some bedrooms right now due to our staffing. If we're fully staffed, we've got one person. They're honestly, they're either sleeping on a cot or in a recliner, just whichever, wherever they choose to sleep. Our bedrooms are currently full. As I said, we built those, that facility at the time in ninety seven when we added on. We built it for our current staffing at that time, and we've now since long outgrown that. So our kitchen area as well needs a real deep rehab. The, at the time that our building was built and or added on to in ninety seven, at that time, the station backup generator was basically underpowered. For whatever reason, they chose not to power the entire building. So now when our power goes out, half of our building does not have, all the lights don't work. Some of our H V A C units don't work. So we can still function, but it's extremely hard with eleven people in there to have numerous lights that don't work. Numerous outlets don't work. The couple of H V A C units, it's just depowered for that generator. So then when our, we're actually an emergency shelter for the Fairview area if we had to open up for an emergency shelter. So if we have to bring people in, which we've done numerous times for severe weather such as ice and snow, this day and age of everybody brings their cordless charger or their chargers with them for all their cordless items. We don't, we don't have the power to be able to operate efficiently. So the other thing that's coming with the addition and the remodel is nineteen ninety seven when we added on to the building, we built it per the fire codes that were current at that time. So now adding on, adding bedrooms, we're required to sprinkle, fire sprinkle those bedrooms. Throughout the process of planning and going through the architects and engineers, we found that we could actually save money by equipping the whole entire building with fire sprinklers because there were certain things that we were required, such as firewalls that we were going to have to put in. And basically, we were told and looked into it. If we were to add fire sprinklers to the whole entire building, we could save money and not having to add so many firewalls and stuff such as that. So if you look into nationwide, you can see on the news, I think it happened somewhere in North Carolina just a couple of weeks ago, fire apparatus catches on fire inside the bays without a fire sprinkler system. You're talking about a major loss of your stuff, not just the truck with the station as well. And so we felt that that was a huge need to provide additional fire safety for our staff that's living there as well as protecting our property and equipment. So twenty twenty one, we mainly started looking into this, trying to beginning a planning phase. Twenty twenty two, we got real deep into it as far as like floor plans and trying to decide what's going to work best. Our station right now is basically centrally located in Fairview. So we didn't want to look at tearing it completely down and starting over, having to move, if we had to move somewhere, we're not going to be in an ideal location. So we chose to stay right there where we were at. The problem is the way the building's built. If we keep spreading out, we're losing parking area and such. So we had to, we chose to go up a story on this one addition to help out with the needs that we had. So it took some time drawing because the engineers and architects had to come out, find out how things could connect. And so it took some, took some time planning and in the beginning phases of trying to find out the total cost of what we're looking about having to finance to make this project happen. It was last year, the architects got some reputable contractors from our area to basically take the square footage and then the equipment we were wanting to add and do to the station. And they give us some quotes. And at that time, it was, we had rough numbers from three point seven to four point one million for the complete station renovation of the current living areas and offices as well as an addition. So we continued after we approved of the floor plan, so to speak. The engineering has to begin about two months ago. As you all know, you all see it all the time with build materials increases. We're trying to get down to the final wire, so to speak, to get this project under construction. And we were basically hit with, well, due to the building material increases, we got hit with about a million dollar increase from what we were told originally. So we had to kind of go back and the contractor that we had selected, as well as the architect and engineer, started going back trying to find areas that not necessarily cut quality, but if there's equipment that we could find that was maybe cheaper, a little bit, tried to get that cost back down. And everywhere we've turned, it's basically due to an increase in building materials themselves. So that's basically the reason for, the main reason for the request for this increase. Ms. Pender, she's worked very well with us ever since she's been here. And she got everybody in the county building reserve funds and capital improvement funds. And thankful for that, we had about a million dollars to put down on this project. But when you, when you're told the project's going to cost roughly four point one million and you're planning on putting a million down and then all of a sudden you're hit with, well, due to the building material increases, it's going to go up a million. So now we're going to have to go back to, you know, the banks and try to find out what interest rates and stuff that, you know, such as everything we planned for two months ago kind of got rocked just a little bit. So we, like I said, we do have the contractor selected. They've been ready to go. We're literally right at, they're ready to go right now. We're just trying to finalize with the architects some areas that we're trying to save some money and try to get these costs down. But unfortunately, what we're finding is we're saving very, very little with what changes that they are able to make. The other project, so to speak, that we have is, as you all know, the price of fire apparatus has gone through the roof. And the other issue with that is there's three to four years of, so if we wanted a new truck today and we ordered it, we're not going to see that truck for three to four years. A truck that, for example, one of the ones we're wanting to refurb, we purchased it in two thousand and seven for three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That same exact truck today is going to be a million bucks. So we looked at that as far as, years ago, we would not even consider refurbishment because at that time refurbishment almost cost as much as the entire truck did. But now when you look at a million dollars for a truck in three to four year wait time, refurbishment is something we decided we needed to look into. So we've got a very good maintenance plan on our apparatus. Our, we spoke with our mechanics that we had worked on our trucks and they actually told us we would, in their words, we'd be stupid to get rid of these trucks because they're mechanically sound. They're frontline trucks right now. And they said you could put a hundred fifty thousand or so a piece in them and it gets you quite a few more years down the road. And that's what we're doing. So we've got a two thousand and four truck and a two thousand and seven truck that we're anticipating. We had a company that they specialize in apparatus refurbishment and rebuilding and repair. And they said with what few items that are needed to be really kind of really updated on the trucks, you could put a hundred fifty easy in each truck and get you years on down the road. So that's, that's the two major projects that we have that really drove our request to to ask for this rate increase as, like I said, we, the main project is we got hit with a million dollar increase for that building construction. So having said that, I can't provide enough pictures or I could talk you to death about it. The only thing I could offer to you all, if anybody had any questions about the need for our updating our station, I just, I invite you to come out and look and you can see for yourself how much the updates are needed.
Thank you for the additional information, commissioners.
Thank you for all those details and definitely your contributions on looking at the cost and everything and trying to do the best you can with the given situation.
Thank you.
And I agree with you. You need the upgrades in your station.
Oh, you've been out there.
Yeah, I had one out, went out to pick up supper. They didn't let me go without giving me a to it. Yeah. And it surprised me really, some of the, yeah, that you don't have the showers or the space and the restrooms and all.
We're proud of our facility.
Oh, it's nice. Yeah, you do a good job with it. Yeah.
We definitely need some more space for our staff.
Chief Jones, when it comes to showers, that was kind of the first thing you talked about. I assume, or am I correct in assuming that like after a fire event, your staff has to come back to the station and immediately shower, right?
That's one big push nationwide is, you know, it used to be back injuries with firefighters and it kind of went to heart problems with firefighters. Now the, now the big problem now is cancer in firefighters. So we've got a, we've got a plan in place to where we're actually on a fire. Before they even leave the scene, we're deconning, kind of just quickly deconning them on the scene. We have to bag up their turnout gear. Don't just throw it in the cab of the truck and ride back with it anymore. There's a lot of things that we do prior to getting back to the station. But the only true way to really get clean and get all the carcinogens and everything washed off is to come back and actually have a decon room to where they can quickly shower and really clean themselves and get that off. So, and right now.
They're waiting in line.
That's what they're doing. We remodeled the one men's bathroom or restroom that has the shower. We remodeled it a couple of years ago. And we did that with funds from a community fundraiser. So, and actually that was prompted because one of the public went into that restroom, used the restroom and seen what the kind of our facilities look like. And they're like, we need to do a fundraiser for this. So we remodeled the men's restroom. So now there has two showers, but the women's, there's only one shower and we have multiple females that work for us now. So they're, they're all waiting in line to take a shower when they get back.
I appreciate the forecast, Chief Jones, and I really appreciate you being proactive about sharing with us where the needs are going to be over the next coming years. That'll certainly help as we're planning out.
Chief Jones, Mr. Presley, and all of our chiefs who are here and have been working on increasing pay to a much better wage. I applaud each of you for that and glad that we can be a part of that. You know that it's a dangerous job and y'all are putting your lives on the line daily to take care of our residents across Buncombe County. So thank you. I am curious if you all or Manager Pender can speak a bit to the initial, reducing the initial increase that was requested. What was the deciding factor behind that, particularly as we hear now that you're going to have to dip a little more into those reserves because of the increased cost?
I'm just speaking from myself and from that meeting. We did ask for two cents initially in our board. Board is very involved. It's not just me when it comes to the financing. And I tell everybody, I'm just a daily operations. They're, they're the money people. But in our initial discussions, we, we talked about a cent and a half. And as you mentioned with salaries, back in twenty twenty, we, as well, it's still happening. There's a lot of turnover in the fire service. In public safety, they're just not paid enough for what they do. But in twenty twenty, we developed a plan to get salaries up where they needed to be competitive region locally and statewide. And so that took a lot of extra money. And at that time, we handled that with our current budget that we had. And that's why we didn't come with others last year for the, you know, those other fire departments came last year and asked for a rate increase. But we were managing and honestly, I'm thankful Ms. Pender's the one that guided us to those, building those reserve funds. So we was able to absorb that. And so when we were hit with that million dollar increase, we were managing. We absorbed that almost eight hundred thousand dollar over three years to increase all our salaries to where they need to be. And when we got hit with that million dollar increase, it's like, we're going to have to ask for a tax rate increase. And that penny, we mentioned a penny and a half that that would get us by. But we, we were, we went ahead because we had, like I said, these two trucks we were wanting to refurb. And just making sure we're trying to cover for, everything seems to be increasing and there's no end in sight for the prices going up. But with next year being a reval year, we looked at it as something, we don't know what's going to change next year, but this could get us by till, we see what happens next year.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner, we are, the county has sponsored a pay study.
Yes.
For the fire departments and that is in process now. So we would like to see the results of that pay study to further educate what the environment would look like.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Jones.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So North Buncombe is requesting an increase of one point five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. This will result in additional revenue of two hundred five thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars above natural growth. They reduced their initial request after working with the county. This revenue will be used to increase staffing for better coverage and service delivery as well as funding for a new engine. The county is in support of this requested increase. Chief Harris is here today to speak to their request or answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Chairman, Manager, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity today to sit for you to talk about our request. Our request is a little unique with our growth and challenges with a call share funding model and trying to get more in line and balance those, not only from a call volume standpoint, but from a weighted standpoint of the municipality's participation in it as well as the North Buncombe Rural District participation in it. Our request, for one, one of the things I want to do with it is the F T Es be split from the town and the county on how we provide that level of service. The fire service unfortunately is ninety eight percent white male. So looking at it, most people, if we're hiring from the same pool, then that's what we're going to hire. Smaller agencies typically have to hire certified firefighters. What we want to be able to do is branch out, is kind of space that timing of the recruits of when they can come online with us. And with that call share, it gives us an opportunity to have some diversity recruitment, hire some people non-certified, put them in the academy again, and reach out to get outside of that typical hiring pool of already certified people. So if we do that, it gives us an opportunity to put some people in the A B Tech Academy because I was reminded that it's not the county academy, that it is A B Tech, but it is a joint collaborative effort. So it gives us an opportunity to recruit and reach out to a different base that is typically what we recruit from. So it gives us that opportunity to get in there, form those partnerships, make it a collaborative effort. And working with partnerships, part of that collaborative effort growth that we are experiencing, especially coming in with Advent coming in, we're going to experience growth on that side. We are experiencing growth even in the Rims Creek Valley area. So we've worked with Rims Creek to be able to put staffing at their station during the day. And as Chief Jones talked about, nighttime living quarters, they don't have the area to house them at night. But with that collaborative partnership effort, they will work out there during the day to give that joint response area a more timely response without investing so much in the capital of having to go in the area and build a new fire station. Obviously, we would rather invest in our people and offset the cost of that capital expense of a fire station, knowing that at some point the county is also looking at doing something in the New Stock Aiken Road area, which is another part of our heat target call volume. So once that EMS station occurs, come back to the table and talk about those collaborative partnerships and maybe putting the engine on that side to kind of spread it out. Because if you can go out and build a station, a station does no good without the people to respond out of it. So looking at those collaborative partnerships to be able to staff those stations economically and feasibly, but also creating the goal is to be able to get some non-certified people, send them to an academy, give them a career and look at that diversity opportunity, funding there to be able to share those costs and partnerships. And I think it's a good headway working with Rims Creek in that area. And hopefully, we can, we can lay the framework and for other county departments to look at how can we economically feasibly justify and work together and build those partnerships stronger with our neighboring agencies and make that a collaborative effort. Again, we talked about the pay itself and looking at it from the town and the county standpoint of splitting the F T Es and those collaborative efforts with the pay, making it competitive salary benefit wise. With the growth and the subdivisions that are already approved, within the next two years, our population is expected to double between the town and the county side of it. And I mean, and that was before Advent even made public that they were coming into that area. But with the subdivision's growth going on and the spread out growth, so trying to stay ahead of that game. As Chief Jones just talked about, you talked about with apparatus, we specked an engine last year for replacement and signed a contract on that. Started setting money aside for the three, three and a half year arrival time for it. This year, we'll be specking out a rescue, but setting aside a small amount for that purchase, knowing that it is four years out. And one of the reasons doing that, the engine last year was just over a million. The rescue is looking at roughly one point five is what we're being told. I attended a meeting down in Western Association Chiefs Meeting. They had taken delivery the day before of an apparatus. That apparatus order was placed approximately two and a half years ago at six hundred and forty thousand. They received it the day before our meeting and the vendor was there and said if that apparatus, if the same apparatus was ordered today, they were looking at one point one. So that was just a two and a half year timeframe. So trying to stay ahead of the game and plan feasibility and prepare for our growth, but also the replacement of the apparatus and the engines, our primary goals. Here's our people and to be able to provide that quality level of service in a timely response. And that was part of the reason of looking at the, at the Rims Creek corridor and working on partnership and collaboration with them is how can we take the names off the side of the truck and look at how are we providing a quality level of service? Because a citizen doesn't care what name's on the side of the truck, but they care about that response time and the level of service that you're able to provide there. So our first step in doing that was working with Chief Justice at Rims Creek to try to make that collaborative effort to support the process and the goals there. But that's all I have for you. I want to keep it short, sweet and to the point and show you our need as well as what the vision that we have of trying to branch and think outside the box on some things, everything from recruitment to response and collaboration and partnerships. So I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Well, as the commissioner who lives in, we all live two miles. I pass by you multiple times a day, going to and from town to work. I am really grateful that you're being proactive and looking at the number of people that are moving into our community daily. I know just in the last two months, three new houses are starting to be built on the rural road to my home. So thank you all for that. And also thinking outside the box in terms of your hiring, as we do have more people moving in, we are. we are starting to see a more diverse group of residents and thinking about hiring folks who may look like new residents and getting creative in that way and partnering with AB Tech. I really appreciate, thank you both.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief Harris. And just, can you explain a little bit more about how you do balance that with the municipality and then in the county and kind of how that works?
Um, before, I don't know if there was ever a true call share funding model. Um, I come from outside of this county and I'm used to, of balancing out and there's different ways to put on it from 2020, 2020, and 20, we're using five funding models, whether it be call volume, uh, population, road miles, things like that. So you can break it out, but roughly right now, what we're looking at is approximately, I believe it was a 55, 45 split was kind of what we looked at in that model on the, one of the latest models that the County Budget Office presented us. But that's kind of where we want to go with it is, is how can we equitably share call share funding models and look at it jointly to be able to, to reach that goal? And as we move further in the processes, work with the county staff and county budgets office, okay, what does this funding model look like? For us being unique, having a municipal general fund district as well, the rural tax district, then, you know, a lot of the incorporated boards, this is all the funding they get. But how can we look at moving forward, everything from bulk joint purchasing across the county, um, being turnout gear or anything, to, to look at the feasibility out? But what does that call share funding model, model look like? And that's kind of where we landed in this process was you split it each, the county give us kind of three different layouts of breaking down the percentages and the weight of those five models.
And so the 55 is the, is Weaverville 45 county or?
Um, I don't.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So now we'll, we'll hear from our education partners. And we are going to begin with AB Tech and follow it down with Asheville City Schools and then Bunkham County Schools.
Good morning.
Thanks for the opportunity to come before you. We see friends here, one of our board members, Ms. Judy Lewis is here. Uh, so thank you for being here, Ms. Ms. Lewis. Um, I'm gonna let, uh, Dr. Wilmuth present our budget. Um, so Dirk.
All right, thank you. All right, let's see here. Okay, we, we have a two-pronged presentation today based on the fact that we, there's some uncertainty about what we're gonna need for next year. We, uh, our first scenario is really looking at the 3.52%, $286,000 increase uh, that we were guided with. Uh, that is adequate to cover our 3% pay increase that we anticipate from the state or for state employees, so we'll match that for our county employees. And we'll have a cash reserve starting the year at about 5.6% of our budget, $500,000. The, the sources of income under this first scenario are that we would have the, uh, hard time seeing that. The, uh, you can see the approved budget over on the left. In the scenario one, we would have a budget of 3.4 million dollars, just over that, uh, out of the general appropriations. And that's on top of the $5 million that we have with our Article 46 agreement. So, uh, so a total of 3.5% would be $286,000. And then you see our cash reserve there, uh, as a buffer for a total of an 8.9 million dollar budget. On the expense side, this harder to see, but, uh, in, in broad categories, you'll see our salary and benefits absorbing most of the increase for the 3% matching the state's biannual budget. And then you'll see operations, uh, with slight changes and utilities with slight changes. So a total of 8.9 million dollars on that, uh, 3.52% increase budget. Now, the second scenario, uh, is accounting for the fact that we have not been out to bid for custodial services since, uh, to, to 2019, uh, for a number of reasons, part of which has to do with, uh, COVID being in the way during that period, as well as the fact that we had to transition our procurement's process to be in line with the state of North Carolina's procurement process. And in doing that, we've had to have extensions for two years. So the concern there is that, uh, we're anticipating that because of inflation, because of all the factors that have driven costs up, that we might have anywhere up to a 20% increase in that contract. And, uh, as I note there, the CPI has increased by 20% since 2020. So hopefully that's, that's a, a cap, but it could be as much as that. We also in, are incorporating the 3% pay increase that I mentioned before. And we'll have a, that cash reserve still at 500,000. So on the, uh, revenue side, really the same scenario. You'll see that, uh, our appropriation from the county budget will be 3.7 million dollars on top of the $5 million that's coming out of Article 46. So a total of 9.2 million dollar operating budget under the second scenario. On the expense side, you'll see that the, we've accommodated 3% increase, but we also have accommodated a potential 20% increase in the custodial budget. So we're a total of 9.2 million dollars. We have been able to accomplish a lot that we feel is, is helping, uh, put the brakes on increases in what we're having to ask you for. And these include ongoing schedule of repairs under Article 46, a 10-year program that we're now, I think in the seventh year of. And, uh, it continues to improve our facilities, our operational efficiencies, replace, uh, old equipment, deal with deferred maintenance. It's extremely helpful. And then we also have other energy savings measures. And then we also have a state certified energy manager on our staff to help guide us. And this year, in fact, we've been recognized by the State Energy Office as a leader in the reduction of energy use intensity. So that, that's a, that's a, a good thing for the county budget. The summary, um, two different budget scenarios, 8.4 million dollars versus 8.7. And you can see the requested increase for Buncombe County would be 286,001 and 586,000 on, on the two. Are there any questions?
Is your enrollment down, up, where are you with enrollment?
Curriculum enrollment for credit is, is flat. Uh, but our huge growth, uh, in the double digits has been on the non-credit side of the house and in basic skills. So people are coming back to earn their high school equivalency. And then the short-term training, um, certifications, kinds of offerings we have on the non-credit side of the house. Up 15, 18% and basic skills is up 20% plus.
When are you gonna get the, um, information on the candidate?
Yes, the, our bids are due on the 22nd and we're meeting on the 23rd of May, uh, to review those. Hopefully we'll have a number by that time. All right, thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Commissioners, other questions? This time?
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioners, before we start in schools, can we take a five minute break? We could reset our.
Sure. All right, take a five minute break.
Morning, how are you? Good to see you. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. Well, good morning, everyone. Glad to be sitting here for the first time in front of our county commissioners. I'm presenting some great information about what's going on in Asheville City Schools and projecting for what our needs would be going forward. First, I just wanted to, even though our board was elected and served for over a year, they still are a newly forming board. So getting a new superintendent and a new board going through a budget process, plus a new CFO, has been a bit of a learning curve for all of us on how we work and how we operate. And particularly coming from a different state, learning North Carolina budgeting process for public schools has been very interesting, to say the least. So just to refresh the board, as I came on, I spent the initial part of my few months here listening and learning to our community. And as I listened and learned to our staff, to our students, to members of our community, it became apparent that we needed to have a focus on where we wanted to go as a school system for the immediate upcoming school year. And as I processed that and listened, we really landed on this area, what has become known as our three promises to our staff, to our students, to our families and our community. And first and foremost, knowing that we need to develop a sense of belonging in Asheville City Schools for our staff and students in our community, that we want to honor the worth of our community equally for everyone, and recognize the gifts and talents that each person brings and what they add to the wonderful school system that we have in Asheville City Schools. But also that we need to look at our curriculum and how we teach and make sure that we're teaching challenging and relevant content. We're focusing on a solid instructional core and that we are preparing our students at grade level content and above. We know each of our students can be successful and through a challenging and relevant and meaningful content and curriculum and instruction, we know we can get them to be reaching greater heights with their achievement. And then finally, reiterating to our staff that we've got to have a sense of urgency. We can't wait. We've got to make every second count. We've got to make each interaction with our students a meaningful interaction to help make sure we're maximizing their learning potential. So that has been our focus throughout this school year. Do want to highlight some great successes that we have seen in Asheville City Schools since the last time we've presented. So we're very excited that eight out of our nine schools met or exceeded growth, as well as our Montfort North Star School moving from a C to a B on the state assessment criteria for accountability. Also Asheville High and Silsa both exceeded overall growths, which we're really, really proud of, the achievements at both of those schools and for those scholars. Our early learning, early childhood learning department continues to accelerate and show us really great growth and really starting our students early with a successful trajectory through their senior year. So we've seen that 20% of our students have shown growth on their developmental domains just from beginning to middle of the year, and we're proud of that. And we've been really focusing on our kindergarten readiness goals and literature curriculum to get them ready to start kindergarten on the right foot. Our early childhood learning staff is highly qualified. All of our teachers are certified birth through kindergarten. Seventy percent of our instructional assistants hold at least an associate's degree in early childhood development, and 30% are enrolled in higher education and are continuing their training. We just had an evaluation through DPI on our PCR 189 grant, and they shared that they felt like we were really exceeding expectations, particularly when it came to our work with math students and how we are supporting our students in math with our tutoring approach. We have been awarded several wonderful grants to enhance our school system's STEM education and safety. So we were awarded just under $70,000 in a STEM grant, and we were one of 20 systems awarded this out of almost 70 applicants. So very excited that we're enhancing our STEM through grant opportunities to make sure that we are incorporating those hands-on lessons. And then also, we did get awarded a $300,000 safety grant that we're using to support and enhance our safety throughout the school system. Continuing our STEM focus, we are DPI, we got a DPI robotics grant that is funding our after-school robotics programs at Hall Fletcher and at the high school in Silsa, but it's also going to help us build the connection at our middle school level. So the plan with that grant is not only to enhance what's happening at elementary and middle, but build that strong bridge so students can continue a DPI robotics focus K through 12th grade. Also, our Glitch 2.0 did qualify for the world competition this year for the first time and came in very successful at the robotics competition. Our Science Olympia team represented Asheville City Schools this year as well against the top 40 middle schools in the state, and they exceeded their own record by earning 10 medals in three different events. And we're just really excited for that to now continue at Asheville Middle School as those two schools come together. We had a group of students from Asheville High and Silsa go to Costa Rica. This is how we're linking content to real life, and these students spent their spring break researching and working on how we are supporting and mentoring our students through STEM development and ecological care. And they monitored four nests of turtles and worked with these turtles and helped research in that Costa Rica trip. And that was just an exciting opportunity for our students. We know our students are still cultivating our arts and talent, and we are committed as a school system to educate our students in a well-rounded way, and enhancing the arts is a crucial piece of that through ceramics, our dance, our theater, our band, jazz band, and multimedia arts courses. And we have seen the results of these investments in several of our alumni. Ambrose Murray, who was a graduate of 2014, was selected in 2024 Forbes 30 Under 30. And then Jay Glenderman, who was a class of 2017, actually was on The Late Show with Stephen Colbert. So some of our graduates and alumni out there showing great achievements. And we have to give credit to our band program. All four of our concert bands this year went to the state musical performance assessment and received all superior ratings from every judge, and that's a huge accomplishment for these band programs. We also had 14 students make it to All-State Honor Band, and they went on and performed with the National Band and Orchestra Festival at Carnegie Hall just a little while ago, and also received highest marks from the judges there. So very proud of our band program. We do have an exceptional career and technical education program. This year, or just this past year, we had 246 career and technical credentials issued and 163 concentrations. So very proud of the extended work there and where we are taking this through building our CTE leadership continuum by enhancing it through creating opportunities such as Pathway to Your Purpose, which is mentoring students to continue their CTE and ambassador programs through that at Asheville High and Silsa. Our robust foods and culinary is creating opportunities that have been student-driven with our Groundhog Cafe, providing breakfast and coffee for students and staff in the morning. And then this year, our business classes partnered with Goodwill to participate in the Career Quest Program, which is the first district in the Western Region to participate in that program. Continuing focus on our CTE highlights, both of our teams, the culinary and the management teams, placed first in the North Carolina State Competition and then went on to compete in the Pro Start Culinary Nationals at Baltimore, Maryland, where they placed 11th out of 48 national teams. So really proud of the work of our culinary arts program. And then our teacher, Sarah, was recognized among the 445 educators across the globe as a Moorhead Cane Impact Scholar. So seeing really great things with our staff and are excited and want to thank the Capital Commission for moving our improvements for our culinary arts program because we think that'll really even help our students take it to the next level. We have demonstrated exceptional graduation rates. Our combined graduation rate was 94%, and when we divide that out, it was 89 at Asheville High and 98.9 at Silsa. We've also had our high school graduates earning honors scholarships for two Moorheads Cane scholarships, a Quest Bridge Ivy League scholarship, six Governor Award nominees, and ROTC four-year scholars. So really proud of our graduates as they get ready to walk across the stage in just a few short weeks. One of the things that I'm really proud of with Asheville City Schools is the percentage of our students completing the FAFSA form for financial aid application. It increased significantly from the previous year of 62% to 71%. That is a major roadblock for many students that don't have strong financial backing from their family or are first-time college applicants to getting to college. So getting those students to complete that FAFSA is a really helpful way to make sure that they're able to get to college or move on in their next steps of their career. Also, 69% of our graduates enroll in post-secondary institutes within 12 months after graduation, and we are seeing that that is the highest enrollment rate across all demographics compared to the state average. And then 86% of our students that enter college continue on to their second year. So not only are we sending a lot of our students in a high percentage to college, they're sticking with it, which is showing that we've prepared them to complete those challenging academics when they get to college. Do want to thank the Capital Commission and the county for our Capital Commission funds. We have put on new roofs and tuck points at our entire buildings at Asheville High, new windows, plumbing upgrades, upgrades to our track. It is just wonderful. Montfort North Star has a new roof, new elevator, restrooms, new windows, HVAC, and some upgrades to our parking lot there, as well as the Jones. We've got new roof, plumbing, kitchen, floor, HVAC, and a storefront there. And we've got several projects that have been approved as well. And I also did want to highlight that the Community Impact Funds that were awarded to Asheville last year were used, as we've been using them in the past, is a major safety upgrade for us, replacing the mulch at all of our playgrounds, which is a huge need for us and Asheville City Schools. So some challenges facing our school system as we reflect on where we're going. And first and foremost, I think from the state legislator is the expansion of the voucher program to include that it pays tuition for students to go to private schools and removing the proposals to remove any income level restrictions on that, which we know will pay for a lot more students that maybe aren't in as much need to pay for private school. We've seen that the cost of living versus salaries in Asheville still continues to be a challenge, and we see that reflected in our staff turnover. And do want to highlight, even though we've had some high staff turnover, and as I mentioned this earlier, high turnover, or not high turnover, but you know, we've had new leaders in some really high-level positions, including superintendent and our CFO. We have seen our enrollment decrease, and I'll share how we expect that to impact our budget here shortly. Our aging facilities continues to create high costs of maintenance for those facilities to keep them upgraded. And you know, as we looked at the budget projections, we're seeing that we're not anticipating as much growth in our local revenue as we might hope. Staff recruitment and retention, we've put in several things to help improve our staff recruitment and retention, increasing our local supplement by 2%, increasing our athletic coaching stipends in this previous year budget. For the upcoming year, we are adding additional life insurance benefit, which is no cost to our employees. Last year, they did also pass the assistant principal and principal stipend increases. We're piloting some retention bonuses for our hard-to-fill positions in EC, science, and math. And part of the three promises with the sense of belonging is I've spent a lot of time listening to our staff, listening to our community members, and engaging them in identifying what are the key solutions that will help improve Asheville City Schools. So we move into what our budget request will be for FY '25. So just a really high-level look at this, as my CFO, Ms. Kearns, and I started looking and planning for our budget, we want to just try to predict where we would, like, what kind of revenue shortfall we might have. So as we looked at our revenues, we were projecting from decrease in student enrollment, a decrease of about just under $1 million, $938,000 due to enrollment decrease. We are anticipating a $1 million deficit, a revenue loss from the ESSR funds that are expiring, as well as increased payment to charter schools of about $500,000. So we're looking at a revenue loss of about $2.4 million. And then on the other side, some increased expenditures that we really know we have to accommodate for in our upcoming budget. A lot of that is salary, which is the increase to our supplement, the state raises, salaries, FICA, and retirement. And that totals our $1.3 million for our local supplement, as well as $1.4 million from the state for those local salaries that we have to pay for that aren't funded through the state. We're also looking at healthcare costs continuing to increase by about $360,000, and then some estimated increase for utilities of about $135,000 and about $72,000 for an increase in property insurance, which takes our total estimated increase in expenses to about $3.3 million, which creates a shortfall for our FY '25 budget of about $5.7 million.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that?
Uh huh.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
I guess I'd like to hear more on the $938K number in terms of like what data you have to kind of predict
Yep.
loss in enrollment, and then just a little bit more on the charter school revenue loss. Like, is that like in excess of, where does that number come from?
Sure.
You want to?
Sure. Right now, obviously, we don't have numbers from the state, but we do know that they're gonna also pilot or start funding us in arrears. So we actually do have our planning ADM, but we do not have those dollars per student yet. So we estimated that $938,000 loss of revenue based on 134 students we will lose in our planning allotments from last year because of our decrease in enrollment and an estimate of what that per-student state funding will be for next year. This past year, we did have a number of new students attend charter schools out of Asheville City, and then of course, with the higher cost of the supplemental tax that's provided to some of those because they're located within the city, it was almost $1 million this past year, and that is a complete unknown for us at this point. But we do have an indication that more students will also move to charter schools for next year, especially with the consideration that we closed the middle school. So that at this point is just an estimate, but based on last year and prior years, that's our best estimate at this time.
So it's kids located in the district that you anticipate choosing in the future to?
Correct. Because this year, we actually, that $1 million increase brought us to revenue that you provide for all the public school students in the county, 2.7 million of what came to us went straight through to those charter school students for this school year. And we anticipate an additional half a million dollars for next year.
Something I'd be?
Academic year.
Pardon?
Do you mean next academic year?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Arson, I didn't mean to cut you off. Something I'd be interested in knowing as we move forward, I know there's no way to get an answer today, and that's okay, but for both of our districts, what is that actual number of students that that money is following to those charters? And I'm also curious, is there a way to track the number of students that start a year at a charter, reach the census date where the money then stays with the charter, and they come back to their home schools within Asheville City and Buncombe County? I don't know if that's data that's trackable, but I would certainly be interested in knowing if that is.
Tina and I could both provide that pretty much at any time because we do actually receive detailed rosters from every charter school every month. They have to be reconciled. We have to track down the addresses to find out if they actually belong to us or someone else. And then we also have to recalculate those per-student funding amounts as we move throughout the year base because those student counts from every single school, every single month change. So yes, we do definitely have all that detail we can definitely provide.
That would be very helpful. Thank you both. Really appreciate it.
Can I clarify something then? So are you reconciling every month and paying a different allotment? So if the student does come back in that first six months or so, you do reconcile? Are you paying a different amount?
We, first of all, again, all of these unknowns put together, we have to start, based on state law, start paying those schools at the beginning of the school year. So the best we can do is get those initial rosters. And if some are missing, we have to really get to the point of just saying, okay, we're going to pay those kids that we have right at this moment and not hold up those payments to those schools because they get very upset when we do, even though we're waiting on someone else for that information. And then if we get rosters late, we make adjustments, we go back and pay retro payments. We, this year, obviously, had a delay in knowing what the actual local revenue was going to be, so we gave initial payments and had to go back and adjust those payments. And then at the end, we look at everything all together and all those counts from everywhere and do a sureup and make sure every single charter school got exactly the same local per-pupil funding that we did for every one of our students. It's a very time-consuming process.
You know where I'm going, so I'll let you go.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question. So I was trying to understand that too. So it's based on, so you're doing this monthly throughout the school year? Okay, and so it's based on however many are in charter schools each month? So it's fluctuating, is what I'm trying to understand. It fluctuates?
It fluctuates every month, but we don't usually change the per-pupil funding amount every single month unless we have changes in fines and forfeitures, because that's the other part. So it's not just the local appropriation dollars, it's also the fines and forfeiture dollars, which also change every month. So that's why the sureup is, and Tina may want to comment on how they handle it, every district handles it a little differently. But we definitely change the funding based on the rosters every month, and then at the end of the year, we sure up the whole process and make sure everyone got exactly what they need to have.
That is helpful, and the reason I was asking, I think where Terry was going as well, is we've always heard that students can come back, but the money doesn't follow the student. But what you're saying is?
That's local. Local follows the student. State and federal does not follow the student.
Exactly.
In 40 days, we lose all of that money to state and federal.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And I just wanted to ask, you mentioned in relation to the question about future decreasing enrollment, you said 134 students. I'm curious where that number comes from.
The 134 students is, DPI has always funded everyone on the best of one or two months of enrollment. So that is month one and month two. And what has usually happened is they make a projection for the following year and give us that in our planning allotment. Well, this year, they got it passed to start a funding and arrears program. So we will be funded next year based on this current, 23-24, best of one or two. We'll determine what we get our money for next year from the state. So right now, we know that in the best of month one or two, Asheville City Schools lost 134 students from the prior year. So that is what's representing that decrease right there.
That's what they use to calculate the?
Our funding from the state level, yes, sir. And then if it's a growth district, which we're not fortunate enough to be in at the moment, those folks will get an adjustment after the beginning of the year in order to compensate them for that additional funding they need for those new students.
Any other questions?
So as we were looking at our data and analyzing what our needs would be going forward, um, a couple, uh, well, the main thing that we saw, we really have a high need for is addressing student mental health and student behavior in Asheville City Schools. And I'll share more information about where this data was collected and how we determined this. But our general, um, kind of list of requests totals about two point one million dollars for these additional positions. Um, the first one is our S R cliff. So as we know, those funds are expiring. We have used those funds to pay for our student support specialists at each school. We're also seeing an increased need for support with social workers and how we're providing wraparound services for our families. Healthcare professional, um, services for our students, um, is another need as well as increasing our school counselor allotment and then adding behavior interventionists to support our staff with, um, student behavior issues. So as I mentioned, uh, we did several input gathering. I've visited each of our schools and spent, um, several hours meeting with the staff, gathering their input through a listening session, and then we also did a staff survey. And when I asked teachers, what factors are inside or outside of your classroom that are interfering with your ability to teach your students, their overwhelming response was their having to address student mental health and behavior needs with their students. Um, and then we asked during a listening session, what should be the top of my to do list as I focus on what to achieve over the next several years? Their overwhelming response was that we need to address student mental health and behavior issues and that those are significant problems impacting their ability to support students in their classroom. Um, and just to provide some data for that, uh, last, last school year, we had a hundred and thirty one school-based therapy referrals. And this year, just through, um, the end of March, we've had two hundred and sixty six referrals. So we're just seeing a significant increase in the number of students that are getting referred for therapy at our schools. Also this year, just up through this date, we've had forty one suicide screeners completed and thirteen threat assessments completed. Also to touch on our behavior, um, thing, as we look at our total office referrals that have been submitted by our staff, um, of just under two thousand submitted, um, for thirty nine hundred students, which isn't terrible. But when we dig into those numbers, we see that it's over half of those referrals are coming from less than one percent of our students. So we have a very small percent of students that need some significant behavior interventions. And that's drawing our attention to the need for some specialized training and, um, staff development for our staff with those behavior interventionists.
Question I have, what is the racial makeup of those referrals?
I did not look at that data.
Could you get that?
I could definitely get that for you.
Yeah, I would like to see that, cause I have some concerns there of who's being referred and what they're being referred for.
Yep, yep, we can share that data for sure. Um, and as I mentioned, our student support specialists, uh, we have one at each, at least one at each school. So we gathered some data on what their work is like. And for our student support specialists, they are responding to between five to ten incidents per day, um, at each school. And they're spending approximately fifteen to twenty minutes on each individual case. And for the most part, the most frequent support that the students need is de-escalating. So that is one, getting them back into a, a zone of regulation where they're able to participate actively and effectively in instruction. However, we also are capturing data for how our students are reporting they feel after they've been with our school support specialists. And when they come in, they're reporting, um, a, an improved range from when they come in to when they leave, between two, one, two point three and three point one increase on that scale of one to five. So we are seeing a positive impact for our students that they're able to then go back and return to their learning environment. And as I mentioned, um, we are really wanting to focus in on supporting our staff, um, and knowing that that S R cliff is there. It has been funding our student support specialists. And as we see the positive impact that they're providing, the high number of cases that there's, um, number of students they're supporting, they have been paid on our classified staff salary schedule. But what we're seeing is we need those staff to have, uh, more training, more support, more specialization in how to support our students and knowing that we need to enhance that, um, job description so that they can provide more of that specialized support. So even though we're short, where our S R cliff is about a million dollars, we're asking for another two, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars so that we can provide training and enhance the credentials for those support staff so they can do even more support for our students. I also wanted to supply some information for your consideration, just historical information about student mental health. There is a, a perception that mental health took a significant, um, turn during COVID and post COVID. And while that is true, that the intensity has increased, this has been a problem for a long time. We've seen, dating back, this is charts from the, um, Center for Disease Control Study on stu-, um, child, child mental health, particularly at high school. And you can see the data all the way back to two thousand and eleven, some alarming numbers about how our young children are struggling with mental health, um, and the different areas about feeling sad and hopelessness, feeling poor mental health, attempting suicide and actually, um, a, um, being injured from suicide. So these numbers are alarming, but this isn't just a COVID. So that's the idea that the COVID cliff, now we've got to fund for that. However, this is something that's been building for a while.
Is this national data?
This is national data, yep. So then you can see, um, breakdown between male and female instances. If you break it, uh, break the data down on, on racial, racial and ethnicity lines. Um, and then this is just some additional data about students actually making a suicide plan for female and male students and the same, um, attempted suicides. So it is alarming. So our, uh, plan to work on, uh, to address this is adding mental health professionals and a behavior interventionist. Um, and we would like to add two of those, um, across to support district-wide mental and student behavior. Um, and those four individuals would be providing direct support to students as well as training and coaching our staff, um, to make sure that we have an overall positive behavior system across our district. And we are requesting for wraparound services and to support not just our students, but the entire family, additional social workers. Currently have five full-time social workers and our ratio is one social worker for every seven hundred and eighty students. Uh, the National Association of Social Workers recommends a ratio of one social worker to two hundred and fifty students. And even if there are areas with intense needs, as low as one social worker for a hundred and fifty students. So if we just increase by two social workers, a ratio would be one to five hundred and fifty seven, which would definitely be helpful, but still not meeting, I think, all the needs that we see in our school system. Also requesting the addition of two full-time school counselors. Again, the same ratio, um, is provided from the American Association of School Counselors. They recommend a ratio of, uh, one school counselor for every two hundred and fifty students. Our current ratio is, is much better than we see for our social workers. It's three hundred, um, students for every counselor in our school system. And as addition of two counselors would decrease that ratio to two hundred and sixty students for each of our school counselors across the district. But we know those are, oh, go ahead.
Remember before you move forward, um, can you share at this time where those positions will be placed within the district or will they be floating?
They are, we're really looking at triaging some of the high needs families and students. So these additional staff will be placed in really kind of case management and working with some of those high intense needs students and families. And they attend many of our schools. And we're really wanting to look at a model where we're supporting a whole family regardless of what school they're at, instead of trying to just make an overall average across the district and spread it very thin. We want to create that intense model of support. Yep. Uh, we also did, um, a lot of examination on how we can save and reduce, um, our expenditures across the district. We are implementing a staffing allocation formula that, that is based on student enrollment. So we have started to implement that, um, as best we can. And we know anytime you implement a staffing allotment formula, it takes several years for that to come into full realization. But we are making great strides with that already this year and anticipate saving of about a five hundred thousand dollars through reduction in staffing across the district. Including down to number three, this, um, staffing allotment formula also covers staffing allotments at central office. And we are cutting staffing allotments at central office by about five percent, which will save us about four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But the other area that we're, um, making some cuts are in just our general operating budgets with supplies, materials. We're cutting that budget by five percent. Um, and then we did, um, have a huge effort to look at how we can save funds and, and match our school size, district footprint to our student enrollment. So we did consolidate our two middle schools into one. We are estimating that savings over the next several years, somewhere between one point eight and two point three. That is a hard number to try to really pin down an exact amount of savings, but through staffing and consolidation of services, we're estimating that to be a range. But that won't be a savings we see first year out of the gate. That will take several years as we adjust through staffing allotments. I did want to address our fund balance. So the gold standard is to have two months of operating costs, um, in your fund balance. Also Moody's, um, indicates that to get an A rating, you should also maintain that two months of fund balance. Last year, uh, and that's our plan to continue with that, uh, two months of fund balance in our, um, two months of operating costs in our fund balance. And so when we looked at our fund balance, um, and what we have appropriated previous years, we appropriated three, uh, million dollars. And when we looked at what our fund balance is versus what our operating budget would be for the upcoming year, uh, we can allocate three million dollars of that fund balance, again, looking forward. Um, also did want to touch on, we had a request come in from ACAE. And the first thing they were requesting was meaningful raises. And did want to point out that our budget does allocate about just an over three million dollars, um, to salary and benefits across the board. They also had a, um, a request about prioritizing staff time. Through our new formula, we are creating a position called a stellar substitute. And that's a full-time substitute at each of our buildings. And what that full-time substitute is able to do is when a sub calls off or we're not able to find a sub, it's a permanent sub that can go in and fill that position. The great thing about a stellar sub is they know the school, they know the students. So when a sub isn't there or a highly qualified sub isn't found, we're able to put someone in who can really keep the learning going. And then the other major need that they, um, identified through ACAE was also funding mental health and student support. Um, and we are asking, um, addressing that in our budget request as well.
I have a question. Did you say that the, um, the stellar sub, uh, program, that's currently in place or that's?
That is a new one. It's a new one, yes.
So it's not?
It's not currently in place, no. So, uh, our overall budget request, um, we are, um, requesting an increase of three point eight million dollars, um, in our local funding. And we are also requesting a restore of the city school tax to pre-pandemic levels of twelve cents for every hundred dollars assessed. And that would generate of that three point eight, one point five, um, one point five seven million dollars in revenue. And that concludes our ask for the budget request for two thousand and five.
Thank you.
Commissioner, there's questions?
I have a question about, can you say more to the behavioral needs that you're seeing?
Yeah.
You must be following that. I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, so what we see with our students is there's a small number of students that really need some intense support when it comes to behavior supports. Now, well, most of those supports, I think, are coming from a need for mental health support. And a student who is challenging and they're not being able to regulate, um, there could be crisis in their home. There could be crisis, um, with the student's mental health. We know that behavior is a form of communication. And it's a way our students are telling us something isn't right with their family, they're struggling in some area. And we know that there are really scientifically proven ways to address students that have challenging behaviors. And currently we don't have, um, enough support to train our staff on how to deal with those, um, challenging students in their classroom, the best way to approach those students, how to create an overall positive learning environment in their classroom. So we know we want to focus on that as we move forward. So those behavior interventionists would be supporting our staff in how they create that just overall general positive environment in their classroom. And then when we do see student behavior interfering with, um, the learning environment, knowing what strategies to use as an educator to help mitigate those so those students can return to learning and make sure every student has that positive learning environment.
Thank you.
I, I can also speak to that a little bit as a board member who also sits with a lot of educators in other capacities to hear educators talk about the classroom environment where they have a limited amount of time during their class. Let's say a fifty minute class period where maybe one student, um, is, their behavior is influencing, say, the first fifty minutes of a class that really impacts what that lesson is gonna look like for the day. And, um, and because of behaviors that, that educators are seeing are maybe not different than they saw ten to fifty years ago, but maybe just more intense than they saw ten to fifty years ago. Needing more resources to, um, to work with that student, to make that fifteen minutes that they might need to work with that child during that fifty minutes, to, to make that more of a, a two to three minute time to settle that student, to then get into the, to the lesson plan. The ask that we're, we're, we're asking for are those, those experts in the building who can help those educators whose focus is really the curriculum, um, and that focus, bring in those supports to help with those, those, um, those increased behaviors that educators just haven't seen, right? And so I think that, that slide that shows that, yeah, these, these behaviors aren't necessarily new, they're just intensified. I think the pandemic didn't bring on new behaviors. They just, um, they, um, revealed behaviors in a different way, right? So.
I have a follow up question to that. I guess I'd like some clarity, just so we can wrap our minds around it as we navigate this. It's not going to be a one-year fund and fix kind of situation. What does that success look like from the behavioral health space? Is that a decrease in court referrals? Is that, um, seeing fewer office referral requests? What, what does that look like in terms of tangible results?
Great question. So I think for us, the success looks like, um, increased time in the classroom. So providing the intense supports at the intensity level to match what we're seeing so that the student can have the behavior or mental health issues addressed in a high intense intervention so that they can return to the classroom sooner than possible. So I don't know that it's less referrals, but it's more time back in the classroom. So really monitoring how much time students are losing instructionally or staff are losing their ability to provide that instruction because they're managing student mental health crisis in the classroom. So we really want to identify what are those indicators about instructional time? And how can we maximize those and increase those levels?
Is there a way for us to deep dive a breakdown? I know Commissioner Whitesides asked for some information on that, but could we get additional information so we can track what that looks like from this year to maybe next four years?
Yeah, yep. And that's one of the areas that we're, we're gathering data from our staff on. When we issued the survey, we asked them, you know, how much time do you think you spend each class period addressing student mental health behaviors or managing a behavior? So we do have some baseline data that we'll be tracking over the next few years.
Thank you.
I want to ask the question that I've asked, this is my eighth budget and I'll continue to ask. Where are we with the achievement gap?
Yeah.
And the reason I ask that, I was at a meeting talking to a couple who had just moved to Asheville. And somebody asked her, where were their kids going? And she said, the Asheville City Schools, and I hope it's a good school. And the lady told her, oh, good school system. She said, oh, sure it is. Your kids are white.
Yeah.
Now, where are we young? Because when we have, I see the money we're spending, like Chapel Hill, we're two of the highest spending districts in the state per pupil.
Yeah.
But yet and still, both of us have the wide achievement gap.
Yeah.
And we have one of the worst in the country.
Right, yeah.
What are we doing? You know, we keep talking about it, but I don't see anything being done. And I have a concern because we're losing so many kids who look like me. They don't have a chance.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that part of the referral problem that we're having in schools is because kids pick up quick. If you sit me in a classroom and I don't feel like I'm important or you don't have any expectations whatsoever out of me. And if I sit there and I'm quiet and don't say anything, you'll promote me. But at the end of twelve years, I might have a diploma, but yet and still I can't fill out a job application. So this is a concern I have because, you know, I've been paying taxes here since nineteen seventy two, property taxes. My family longer than that, since the thirties. But I want to see where I'm getting my money's worth, and I don't feel that I am. And sure, my kids have done well. My grandkid who's graduating from SLSA, he's got scholarships. But that comes from two generations of college graduates who are helping him and pushing him. But I want to see what's going on with the average African-American kid. And it's bad when I talk to the families, I talk to the kids. I just wish they were like my dad who went to the eighth grade, but he saw all of his kids, grandkids and all before he left here with degrees. But a lot say they're intimidated and don't want to come to the schools. That makes me feel bad, you know, when I hear that. But we've got to do something to correct it. You know, I'm sick and tired of hearing that. I've been fighting in this community for, including. I've been fighting in this community for inclusion since I was 15 years old. And I'll be 80 years old later this year. Damn, if we're not still talking about things that should have been solved years ago. I mean, I'm, as Ms. Fanny Lou Hamer said, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired of hearing this. So what are we going to do about it?
Commissioner Whitesides, I appreciate the question. And I've sat before you now for three budget.
And you've heard the same thing?
I have, yes, sir.
Okay.
And so that's why I'm choosing to answer your question as opposed to Dr. Furman. It's part of the reason why my board, and I'm saying this, my board since I'm the board chair, chose Dr. Furman as our superintendent after having, over the course of a decade, seven different superintendents sitting in Hershey.
And I've heard this about everyone of them.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
We just went and marched through a really contentious, very sad, a very troubling decision to merge two middle schools. One of which really, I mean, you saw that Alfred North Star has some excellent things going on in that school.
Is that because the majority of the school is white?
I think, I.
Come on. You know, this is one thing.
Right, and so.
Yeah, this is one thing the school system have done for years. I can go through Asheville High and I can look in the classroom and tell you the accelerated classes. And because there's no black kids in there, Holly, maybe one. But we have done a good job of creating two school systems in one.
And so.
But I want to see it be one school system for all the kids.
Right. And so part of that merger was to, was to open up that building that once housed a very successful Randolph Learning Community.
Right.
That served a majority of black population. And that building now is open again to place students that now are part of what we call Education Career Academy, that for a very long time have been housed in, well, at one point was housed in mold-ridden FEMA trailers, right?
It should have never been put in.
Right, never should have been. At one point, that Randolph Learning Community was promised to be put back in that building. Commissioners, I mean, I don't think anybody who now sits on this commission was a part of that at that time. But this commission promised those students that they would be put back in that building. City Council promised those students they'd be put back in that building. The school board promised those students they'd be put back in that building. And they were not, that promise was broken, right?
Was it the commissioners or was it the school board?
Those students went.
I was on, I was just going off the school board then. I don't remember the commissioners, city council. I don't remember them promising that.
Those students went before all three bodies and just said, well, our concern is that we're not going to be put back in that building.
I was, I was going off then, but I don't remember that way.
My point being is that this is, these are things that we've tasked our superintendent to do, is recognize that our district has done harm to our black students.
A lot of harm.
A lot of harm. And we recognize that there is a sense of urgency. And there has been a sense of urgency. And also, if we're going to do things quickly, that there is a, that there's a risk of doing things quickly means there's risk of doing more harm. And so we have to do things deliberately so that those harms are repaired permanently, right? And so merging those two middle schools to create space for the ECA to now build up a beautiful school that will operate in similar ways that Randolph School had done, right? And create space for a place that that Career, Education and Career Academy, or whatever we choose to call it in the future, can be that kind of nurturing community, that place of belonging, as Dr. Furman has said, becomes a place, right? And so this request, this budget request that we are asking for, a place for, a request that asks for more, not classroom teachers, but people in the building who are able to speak to students, not necessarily within the classroom setting, but down the hallways when students are passing between classes, where we see some behaviors erupting. Or, you know, as they're, as they're walking out of the building that afternoon, where we, you know, we know that, I mean, 180, what is it, 182 days out of the year? And only seven and a half hours out of the day is really not that. You know, out of 365 days, 24 hours per day, that's not a lot of time. And so to maximize that time, this budget request is focused on, what are ways to repair that harm individually with the students? And then what are ways, we as a district, as you, Commissioner Whitesides, have said this, other commissioners have asked this as well, how can we right-size these districts where maximizing these dollars so that we can best serve every student in our district? Not just the white students in our district, black students as well, Latina students, as we're seeing an increased amount of Hispanic students, Pacific Islander students, as we know, we're acknowledging Pacific Islanders, Heritage Month this month. We're seeing an increase of those students in our district as well. We acknowledge that this district, for a long time, has focused on a well-resourced community within our city, right? And now here's a moment with our new superintendent, who has said to us, she wants to be here for the long haul. And we want to give her the tools to make sure that we are doing what you have asked us for many years to do, right? Knowing that we can't do it, we can't do it in one fell swoop.
Every budget, you want more money. And every budget, I see nothing being done.
I would respectfully say that some of the data that you're seeing has proved, for example, like we've got more students filling out FASDA, we've got students who are, we've got two students who are Morehead scholars. Again, that's two students, I understand. That's not indicative of every student in our district, I understand that. But we are seeing results. I can, I believe Dr. Furman could show you more and more data that's showing that, yes, it is, it is not, again, going to happen in one fell swoop. This is a, we are playing the long game of how we can do this. Again, what is that proverb? You go, you've got to go slow to go far. And we are, I know, I know, because you've been asking for many years.
Whenever it's the dealing with African-Americans, it's sword and throw.
Right.
But if it was the other way around, it would be corrected in atomic time. Come on, I've seen this all my life. So, you know, all I'm saying is, the talk sounds good. We need to see some action. And that's what I want to see. And as a taxpayer, I don't feel like I'm getting my money's worth. And that's all I'm asking.
That's fair.
And as a commissioner, I'm talking about what comes from constituents out there. And I'm not just talking about black constituents. I'm talking about all the people who live in this community. Ask me, when are you all going to do something? So it's time, it's past time.
Commissioner Whitesides, I 100% agree. And looking forward, you will see results, I can guarantee that. You will see our achievement closing, you will see our achievement increasing overall. And you hit the nail on the head, our black students don't feel like they belong.
No.
Which is why first and foremost, we need to build that sense of belonging across our district so all of our students feel seen, heard, and welcomed. And that has been my initial charge coming in, is we need to create that sense of belonging and make sure that our students feel like they belong. I've been in classrooms across the district, I've been in every school, and I've probably been in almost every classroom. And I can see where we're not meeting that need for our students, and we're addressing it.
Oh, yeah, you can see it when you walk in the school.
Totally see it.
Yeah, I agree.
And the line, and this line has been drawn in the sand. And people are coming along and changing and growing and making sure those students feel that sense of belonging, or they won't, and they'll find another district to work for.
I spent a lot of time in one particular Asheville City School as a parent. And I recently chaperoned prom. And I was sharing with some constituents recently, they're like, what was that experience like? And I said, if you go to Asheville City Schools, particularly Asheville High, and you haven't found where you belong, we have a problem. As you watched those students walk into prom, you could tell that they had a sense of belonging with their peer groups. You could tell by their style, you could tell by their energy that there is, there is a place, at least within that school, for every student. And you could sense it, you could feel it, you could talk to the students. I want to acknowledge everything that Commissioner Whitesides has said and lift that up, as well as going back and looking at the slide on achievements in Cougar Country. I think for the first time, this is my sixth budget cycle, I believe, this is the first time that I've seen eight of nine schools in Asheville City Schools meeting or exceeding growth. And I think we would be remiss not to notice that the one that did move from a C to a B is that difficult decision that you all had to make. So I do think that there is a trajectory of looking at that data and really digging in to make sure that students are performing and making those decisions. And every budget year, I have brought up William Randolph and that that school was indeed promised back to those kids. I sat in commission chambers with those students at that time and members of that faculty. That building was promised back to them. And as we've talked for years about equity and achievement gap, not having that school in the system has proven to be a continued mark on Asheville City Schools to not have it. So I do want to commend you as someone who watched that school grow over 10 years and the family that was built with teachers and students. Even my own kid, who rode the bus from Iber B Jones to William Randolph at the end of the day, and those high school kids took care of him like a little brother. It was a family, and it was making an incredible impact on our students, who are our most struggling students. So thank you. Thank you for acknowledging those students who belonged in that building and returning it rightfully to them and working to increase their academic achievement moving forward.
And I know several of the students who were there are very successful.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have an estimate for how many students will be in the Randolph program when Randolph is back online?
Yeah, we're going to, we're opening it next year. We're increasing our high school number by 15, so that'll be 45 high schoolers and adding 30 middle school students.
I'm sorry, 30 middle school and how many high school?
We'll have 45, so 75 total to start with.
In regards to that, trying to find the slide pertaining to savings from the merger of the middle school. I guess, are those costs for the Randolph alternative school included or excluded from the savings numbers?
They're excluded from that. So we're not, the staff that we want to be adding are some of the social workers, the mental health professionals to serve those. We have extra teachers, so we're just relocating teachers instead of adding instructional positions. And we saved significant money from now no longer having to lease two facilities for operations as well as the Eddington Center, which we had been leasing.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
I'm just curious also, we had a presentation the other day and it kind of showed us, it was Tuesday evening, and it showed us the layout. It looked like there could potentially be extra space within that facility. Are you looking at moving administration over there potentially?
To the Montfort location?
Yes, from the central office.
Yep, so our Student Services Department is going to move over to the Montfort building so that they can be right there where we have some of our highest needs. And then as we kind of fill out that space and see how many more classrooms we need versus how many more instructional administrative offices. So for the time, we've got one department moving over there. We'll monitor to see student need versus administrative office need.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And, I mean, I, after everything that Commissioner Edwards said about, you know, support for finding a good home for the program, I think, you know, was very well regarded when it was at Randolph. So don't want to take away from anything from that. But with, my question is, in terms of thinking about the program going forward, I mean, is there a concern about the Randolph School being underutilized? This sort of following up our first question. I mean, it is a pretty big building. I mean, when, you know, when Dixon was under construction, Old Dixon Elementary School was there. I'm not sure exactly how many students it was, but it must have been, you know, 350 or something in that neighborhood. So it's, you know, it's a pretty big building. So what, could you just share any other thoughts around sort of the utilization of, you know, the full building for the future?
Yeah. And as we do it, like I said, we'll start with 75 students. Our plan is to grow it to probably around 150 students at that building. And knowing that the support size, the student-to-teacher ratio, we want to keep at a lower level. We know we need more classroom space with more teachers and a lower student-to-staff ratio. So that does kind of take up more space. So while a building can hold more students, we want to also look at programmatic capacity. So if we look at our staff-to-student ratios, we will be maxing those out, even though they'll have more space. But we also are looking at adding more community-level services there for that to be a building that our families can access from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So it won't be like, hey, we're just going to be here in the morning. We want to be able to provide before-school care for parents that maybe need to drop their students off or after-school care through 7:00 p.m. So it's not just going to be an eight-to-three school. This will be a community school that will serve our whole community.
And as Dr. Maggie so well detailed, she's really taken this as a full-family approach. And one of those things that's exciting that we're going to be able to start there next year or two would be with the help of our Chartwell's Partners for Food Service. They made a $30,000 donation in the initial contract term, and we're going to be able to start food pantry at that location and continue even more of those full-family supports through that opportunity there.
And that was the full spirit of the original Randolph program. Thank you.
All right, other questions? One question, and I don't necessarily, you know, expect a really lengthy answer to this question at this meeting, but maybe more for going forward. In regards to the mental health issues, behavioral health, behavioral issues in schools, one of the other questions, so you were saying, like, one of the metrics to look at is like how much time kids are back in, back in the classroom. And that, I think that makes a lot of sense. One of the other questions I have, as we look at these issues, which are pervasive, you know, and is how we monitor which of the different investments in mental health services are being effective and maybe which ones are not being so effective? Plus, I think it's this area where there's a lot of additional attention and resources being invested in this space and the need for more. But it's also an area where, you know, and I'm certainly not an expert on it, but from like what I have read and hear, like, you know, there's not, we don't necessarily have a lot of data on which parts of our investments are really producing a lot of positive results and which ones maybe, maybe are not. So how are these programs being evaluated currently? And what's the plan for sort of further assessing what's working, what's not working as we move ahead?
Yeah, and that's some data I need to gather. Kind of as we are moving into strategic planning, that will be one of the data pieces that we'll be gathering. What programs are out there? What return on investment are we seeing with those? So we know where to allocate resources. So I think what's happened over time with leadership change is a new initiative's been brought in, but nothing's been stopped. A new initiative's been brought in, nothing's been stopped. So we need to take a very close look at what are all these initiatives and stop doing the ones that aren't providing that return on investment. So that is a key piece to the strategic planning that's beginning this summer.
And that was a surprise to me, that you all don't have a strategic plan. I couldn't believe that.
Another thing we brought in, Dr. Furman forced. Can I, could I piggyback on that and just, something I've been thinking about for a while? You know, again, we see our students for 180 days roughly every year, eight, seven and a half hours a day. And in sports, you know, it's still, it's about half of their life in the year. And I sit through a lot of meetings at, you know, city council level, commissioner meetings, you know, pay attention to state politics, national politics, whatever. Lots of policymakers has to look at environmental impact studies, economic impact studies, et cetera, et cetera. And this is just for, this is for the room. One thing that we as, think as a culture don't do is think about youth impact. And so this isn't, this isn't for this conversation right now because we're asking you to look at a budget. But as things come up before us in. But, but as things come up before us in all of our lives, do we ever really think about what's the, what's the impact on youth? As we look at, say, a development that's going to happen right over here, right? What's the impact on youth? As we look at whether, you know, whatever might be coming before us, how is this going to impact the youth that then come into our buildings every day? So when we think about mental health, it's not just about what mental health might be within our classrooms or within our school buildings. But how might that, that might be, like, how might some other decision we as decision makers, we as adults are making, how might this be impacting the youth that then come into our school buildings? Whether it's Asheville City Schools, City School Buildings, or Buckland County School Buildings, or Charter School, or private school, right? Because eventually those youth are coming to us as the adults that we're then going to hire and that kind of thing. And I think it's something we as a, I'm, I'm sorry to get soapboxy, but I think it's something that we as a country might, I think we kind of need to reevaluate. We don't often think about these policies we're thinking, we're, we're making and what they, how they impact the, the youth that are coming up and what they then are going to be doing for us later on.
All right, commissioners, other questions for the city schools? All right, hey, thank you for the detailed presentation and conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can we propose a five-minute break?
Five minutes for real.
Brownies start the count.
10:53.
There's an article in the Times, this few days ago, about student mental health. It's pretty discouraging. And it's kind of, and that was kind of what brought the question. Big study, a lot that you're studying. And basically, they're on their way, hopefully, to be better than they are not showing today. Buncombe County Schools, thanks for being with us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. It's an honor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. It's an honor to have the opportunity to share with you today about how Buncombe County Schools is doing. It's hard for me to believe that we are planning for and approaching my third school year in Buncombe County Schools as the superintendent. And I can share with you, as I've shared with you previously, when I had the incredible blessing to return home to the school system that I grew up in and taught in and served in, I knew that I was blessed. And all this time later, I can tell you, I'm incredibly blessed to be a part of the Buncombe County School System. And so I'm excited to share with you. I would like to recognize we have a couple of our board members here. Ms. Judy Lewis, who represents the Inca District, what will be District Number Five in the future after our recent electoral redistricting. And Ms. Kim Clemmons, who represents our Irwin District, which will be the District Number Six as we go forward. Certainly that's something that a challenge that we had to address this past year. But again, very delighted to be here. I'd like to start with something that absolutely comes from the heart and I hope that you've seen it in our actions, and that's our great appreciation and thanks for our commissioners. We've conducted 13 community town halls since my arrival. In all of those town halls, in all 45 of our schools, in each of the staff meetings I've conducted, in our Board of Education meetings, we have authentically and profusely thanked our commissioners. This board has a history of investing in Buncombe County Schools and we are greatly appreciative as I've had the opportunity to reflect on my own experience as a superintendent in other districts in the state and working with superintendents across the state. I recognize our school system is incredibly blessed by the investment that our commissioners make. And it's not just an investment of funds. You invest your time and your expertise. We're so grateful that our commissioners, and I grabbed some photos from, from my phone, but we're so grateful that our commissioners spend time in our schools and not just at events. Spend time in our classrooms, observing our teachers, talking to our students. It has been an absolutely wonderful experience for me to know that when I sit in front of you and I share with you, you know that I'm being authentic because you've been in our classrooms across Buncombe County and it means the world. I also want to shout out our county manager who recently, she's shaking her head, she doesn't love that, but I'm going to do it anyway. She gave the opening remarks last week at TC Robertson High School as we hosted the Special Olympics. And we were delighted to have our county manager welcome our student athletes, our Special Olympians and all the staff and all who were gathered that day. It was a special day. And so again, I do want to share my appreciation with our commissioners for your investment of your time, your talent certainly, and also the funds you invest in our school system. I also want to pause and put a pin in because I want to say thank you to our State Representative Lindsey Prather, who introduced a bill this session to reimburse the Buncombe County School System for the cost of the Board of Education redistricting. We certainly are advocating for that to pass because that has a budgetary impact on our school system. That was a, a cost we didn't anticipate this past school year. We had to eat that cost, as they say, and she's introduced that bill to reimburse our school system. She's also, as I'm sure you're well aware of, introduced a bill to reimburse Buncombe County for the cost of the consolidation study. And so we very much appreciate her for introducing those bills and for Representative Agar for co-sponsoring those bills. And we join the county efforts in advocating for those bills at the state level and will continue to do that. And so we want to thank her for that. I can share with you that last year in 2023, the state changed or revised a statute that requires first time that the school system at the time that we make our budget request, we provide to our commissioners in writing the academic performance of our schools in a local administrative unit. So I'd like to pass around real quickly a document that is in writing so I can share with you the academic performance of our school system. I'll also be highlighting some of these areas as we go through the presentation. I would note that on the bottom of that document is a link to the North Carolina School Report Cards where you have all of the data by school at a very deep level so that you're able to see what would be called the return on investment. The county puts a lot of funding and resources into our school system and the taxpayers should see a return on that investment. And I'm quite proud of the return on investment that they see in the Buncombe County School System. And so very quickly, you'll see that our cohort graduation rate, and I'll mention this again later, highest in the history of the school system above state average. Our school performance grades above school, above the state average, rather. Growth across the school system, 77% of our schools met or exceeded expected growth, again, above the state average. Our achievement above the state average and our ACT scores of 19.1 this previous year. We're waiting for the data for 2024, what matched our seven-year high. So our high school students have returned to pre-pandemic levels in terms of ACT scores. And so we're extremely proud of that. And for all of our commissioners, if there's specific questions about the student success outcomes for any of our students or any of our schools, we're always happy to drill down and give you anything that you might request of us. That being said, we have been talking about, and I appreciate my colleague and friend, Dr. Maggie Furman, using the phrase "greater heights" just a little while ago because I got really excited about that phrase because that's what we're about in Buncombe County as a county and certainly in Buncombe County Schools. In the Touchstone Leadership Text, Good to Great by Jim Collins, many of you I'm sure have read it, one of the concepts he talks about is the flywheel. The flywheel, when you first start any change project or any continuous improvement, takes a lot of energy, a lot of time to get the flywheel to start spinning. You have to work really hard to get the flywheel to start spinning. But as it spins, it begins to pick up momentum and spins faster and faster and faster and it becomes easier to continue that continuous improvement effort. At the start of this year, in fact, I may have said it in our last budget meeting a year ago, I believe, and said that I believe that the 2023-2024 school year would be our finest year ever. Today, as we approach our first graduation on May 31st at PEP, I'm still saying that. In fact, I'm saying it more enthusiastically than ever. As we look at our metrics from student success to teacher satisfaction to our enrollment, we're incredibly excited about the momentum of the Buncombe County School System that we're seeing across all 45 of our schools. And so as we continue to grow towards greater heights, we appreciate all that the commissioners have done for us and continue to do. And so we thank you for that work together. This past year, North Carolina gave, gave us a brand-new data tracking system called Year Over Year Trends and Impacts. This data is looking at scale scores. On the screen is actually third grade reading. The blue dots are the scale score for the corresponding year for Buncombe County Schools, looking at third grade reading. The solid kind of purplish, Buncombe County Schools purple color is actually the trend line or the district achievement. It's extended out in that dash, that purple dash line where we would be if that trend had continued, if the pandemic had never happened. This data was put together to ask the question about how are we doing with learning recovery, knowing the impact of the pandemic on our students because they were away from being face-to-face with our teachers. And so had the pandemic not happened, our scale scores would have potentially followed that purple dash line. The turquoise dash line is the three-year average prior to the pandemic. And so that looks at a shorter timeline, where would we have been? And what I take away from this, first of all, in third grade reading, we certainly see the impact of the, of the pandemic as you see that sharp decline in 2021. However, since the pandemic, what we see is this incredible trend. We see that our scale score is actually back to where we would have been had the pandemic not happened. We see an incredible growth in our growth rate in third grade reading. I'm really excited about this because it's built upon, one, the work of the school system in redoing our instructional framework, K-12 for the school system, which that work actually predated the pandemic, but it dovetailed nicely into the state-required training for our elementary teachers called letters. You may have heard about letters. Two years of training, time intense. Our teachers gave a lot of time and energy to that and we're seeing the results. What I particularly love about this and the reason that I pulled out our third grade reading EOGs year over year and we look at that trend line is this. In the Buncombe County, the County Strategic Plan, one of your goals is an educated and capable community. And one of the metrics you look at is increasing the third grade literacy rates, especially among underperforming students. And so when we see our third graders hitting the mark in terms of the county strategic goal, I'm quite proud of that. Again, it's evidence of we're getting that flywheel going the right direction and picking up steam and we're beginning to see trends. And so we have this data for all of our EOGs, third through eighth grade, plus our high school EOCs in reading, math and science where applicable. This is a second example. I won't go through all of those. I certainly could because I'm quite proud of it. This is looking at math in fifth grade. Again, you see that tremendous dip in math scores. We saw this across the state during the pandemic. And then post-pandemic, what we're seeing in Buncombe County Schools is again a very positive trend line. The taxpayers invest in our school system. One of the ways we measure return on investment is how are our students doing academically when we think about them being prepared to be successful citizens in our community as we move forward? We continue to ask, how are we doing? The latest data, of course, we're approaching the time we'll be doing EOG end-of-grade assessments and end-of-course assessments in the next few weeks. It's hard to believe we're coming to that time of the year. And so the data we look back that we've received since the last time we were here for budget was how did our schools do? 20 of our schools exceeded growth. That's the largest number of schools in our school system to exceed growth ever. It's a historical mark and we're quite proud of that. I've said I believe this is our finest year ever. And so I look forward to repeating that statement a year from now that we've again broken our historical highest mark with a larger with a larger number than that still. We're not satisfied with twenty schools exceeding growth. We're looking forward to forty-five schools exceeding growth, and we're working hard to make that happen. How are we doing? Four of our schools that were previously designated as low-performing have moved out of that designation. Now, I'll tell you, I hate the way they measure that. I think it's an inaccurate, terrible way to measure success in a school. It is what it is, though, and so we're proud of the work of our schools to exit that low-performing status, and we look forward to more of our schools being able to celebrate that in just a few short weeks. How are we doing? Seven of our schools improved an entire letter grade on the school performance grade. Those letter grades are on a fifteen-point scale, so moving from one letter grade to another is a significant accomplishment. We're quite proud of them. How are we doing? I'm quite proud of this. Twenty-seven of our schools and the school system as a whole improved in grade-level proficiency over last year. So the state measures two things. One, growth, where every single student started and where they ended at the end of the year, and two, proficiency. How many of them got over the line that's been artificially said is this is grade-level proficiency? And so when we see all twenty-seven of the schools, but the school system as a whole improving in grade-level proficiency, we're quite proud of that. How are we doing? This, this, this gets me incredibly excited. Gains were made in reading and math scores across all subgroups. Every single subgroup in Buncombe County schools saw gains in reading and math. When we're committed to each and every student, we're committed to each and every student, this represents the incredible work of our teachers, our instructional assistants, all of those who support our students throughout the school system, and so again, we're seeing that flywheel continue to spin and spin faster. How are we doing? Last year, ninety-one percent, ninety-point-nine-eight percent of our high school students graduated on time. That is the highest cohort graduation rate in the history of our school system, one of the highest in the state among large school systems. What I love about this, this data goes back to 2012. As I look at this graph, what I see is continuous improvement. What I see is a school system that continues to get better and better year after year. This isn't based on one individual or one school. This is based on a system that is absolutely committed to continuous improvement, and when we look at twelve years of data and we see that trend line, we're seeing that, we're seeing that flywheel spinning. We know that again, in the Buncombe County Strategic Plan, under the goal of educated and capable community, one of the metrics the county and the commissioners look at is improving our high school graduation rate, and we're quite proud of that work in Buncombe County schools. And again, I look forward to a year from now telling you we've broke the record again because I believe the class of 2024 is going to do that for us. And so we continue to ask, how are we doing? Every two years, the state of North Carolina surveys all of the teachers and certified staff, and they report those results by school. This year, I'm extremely proud that ninety-five-point-seven-three percent of our teachers and staff actually responded to that survey. I know you look at a lot of data in a lot of areas. When I look at surveys, the first thing I look at is the response rate because if you're only hearing from a small number, you can't put a whole lot of stock in that data. But when we look at a response rate of almost ninety-six percent, then we can believe the data that we receive. This is the second-highest response rate among the fifteen largest school systems in the state, and here's what jumps off to the page to me. So as we look at those, one of the first statements that teachers have the opportunity to strongly disagree, disagree, agree, or strongly agree with is overall, my school is a good place to work and learn. In 2020, this was administered in early March 2020, right before schools closed for the pandemic, so pre-pandemic numbers, eighty-five, almost eighty-six percent of the teachers in Buncombe County schools said, overall, this is a good place. In 2022, as we were going through the pandemic, that dropped to eighty percent. While we appreciate eighty percent, that is not something any of us would just be celebrating. This year, ninety-one-point-two-five percent of our teachers in Buncombe County schools said, overall. That's an eleven percentage point gain with a ninety-five percent response rate. So we feel really good about our teachers feeling that they are supported in our school system. A part of that, and a big part of that, is thanks in part to this group of county commissioners. You helped us increase our local supplement last year, and that's one of the things that leads to teacher satisfaction, when we can help with our teachers being able to afford to live and do the work that they love to do, and so thank you for that. I think another part of that is making sure that our teachers feel they are valued, and so we've instituted this year our Teacher Advisory Council. Our teachers help make decisions, all of the decisions in our school system. We've instituted our Student Advisory Council, so our students meet with me on a regular basis to share with me the needs that they have. We've spent time in our classrooms. The folks who work outside of the classroom are charged with being in the classroom. It's important to me to be in the classrooms all the time in all forty-five of our schools, and we do that, and we're hearing from our teachers in a big way that they appreciate it. And so you know, and you've read, that teacher retention is a tremendous challenge in public education everywhere. It continues to be for us as well. I'm not being Pollyanna in this moment. It's still tough to make sure we're supporting our teachers, and we need to continue this work, but I feel good about where we are and the work we're continuing to do, and so quite proud of how we're doing. How are we doing? This year, we were able to offer every single student free breakfast and free lunch, so there was no shaming in terms of having to get free lunch because everybody had that opportunity. That required our administrators in our schools to make sure we encourage students to take advantage of lunch and breakfast because it's based on participation rate, and I'm proud to share with you that we'll be able to continue to do that next year. It's a year-to-year decision, and it requires a lot of hard work to make that happen, and it was absolutely a game changer for children, and particularly those families who are in crisis, knowing that their children would have two good meals a day, and so we're quite proud of the work to make that happen in our school system. How are we doing? We've just launched our Smart Bus app, so our parents are able to track where their bus is. If the bus is delayed in traffic, this morning, we were delayed at Black Mountain as we had a tree across the road where buses couldn't get into Black Mountain Elementary and Primary, but our parents could go on their app and see exactly where the bus was, and so we didn't have children standing out in the rain with the bus still twenty minutes away, and so we're quite proud of being able to add that. How are we doing? This perhaps is the culmination of some amazing work. I think it is. We have just, our Board of Education has just approved our brand-new strategic plan. This is the work of eighteen months. We did have a strategic plan, however, the strategic plan expired during the pandemic in Buncombe County schools, as many school systems did, concentrated on educating students in a pandemic. This work represents thousands of survey responses from staff members, from community members. It represents thirteen community town halls. It represents district advisory councils, school advisory councils. It represents input from our Teacher Advisory Council, our Student Advisory Council. It represents hours and hours and days and days and literally months of work to restate our vision, to restate our mission, and then to dig deep into our core beliefs from all of those stakeholders and all of those late-night meetings in trying to understand where our parents and community members wanted to see our school system go. And so everything we do is based in our strategic plan, including our budget request today. I've said to our Board of Education, and it's not new to me, if you want to know what we value, you look at two documents, our calendar and our checkbook. How we spend our time and how we spend our resources clearly indicate what we value, and so our core beliefs are based on engaging our students in meaningful ways, collaborating and connecting, building strong family and community partnerships, supporting our educators, and investing for equity and excellence throughout our school system. And I believe that the results we've just kind of run through show where our work is, and we look forward to our strategic plan guiding our work going forward and are particularly, again, so excited that so many people have worked so hard to bring this to fruition. And so as we move forward from our strategic plan into our budget request, I want to very quickly kind of give the lay of the land, so share some of our annual planning and budget work, the development overview, the current landscape, our challenges, and then our request. And so as you know, we are constantly in a budget cycle. This work never ends. Our finance department, and I'll pause for a second to highlight and compliment the Buncombe County Finance Department, who are in the room. They are such incredible partners with our finance department throughout the year. They ask for things, we give them things, we ask for things, they give us things. It's an incredible partnership, and we very much appreciate that. Our finance department is always working in three years, as we're concluding the previous year, helping the auditors with the information they need, as we're operating in one year and planning for the next year, continuously looking at our results to determine if we are getting the return on investment throughout the school system. This year, you've heard many of these items from Dr. Furman and from Asheville City Schools, we have quite a few challenges. One of the biggest, the biggest perhaps, is the end of the ESER funding. We knew this day was coming. We've known it for three years and worked hard to be ready for that moment. We have salary and benefit increases and increases to our health insurance rates. Those are set by the state. As you know, this is the second year of a biennial budget, and so we have an approximately three percent on average salary increase across the state in our school system. It's going to be approximately three-point-four percent because we have such an experienced staff. We're quite blessed to have a very experienced staff in our school system. Utilities and insurance rate increases, inflation, position costs related to enrollment growth and decline, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Our charter school enrollment, so I want to pause for a second and talk about our charter school enrollment. Currently, in Buncombe County schools within our footprint, there are two thousand seven-hundred-sixty-two students in charter schools. I believe that number will be decreased by at least one hundred next year. This year, we sent a letter from each of our schools and a brochure and intentionally invited families to come into our schools. I believe in school choice. I also believe we are the best choice for families, and part of our work is to make sure parents know what's available in our public schools, and we have seen a tremendous positive response to that with parents who have previously or currently have children in charter schools, who've come in and toured our schools, who've enrolled in our schools, some this current year, some for next year, and so we're very excited about that work to decrease the number of families who are choosing charter schools. Again, I believe in choice, and charter schools are great, and maybe they're the best option for some students, but I think that for me, the best option is our school system, and so we've worked really hard to intentionally invite families to come tour our schools, and we're seeing that pay off. We do know this is an election year, and what that means for us is there's unknown legislative changes, and so the governor, as you may be aware, has called for an eight-point-five percent increase. That impacts us because we have so many locally paid positions. What the General Assembly will or will not do, we don't know yet, and unfortunately, we have to plan for what we don't know, and that is the case in school funding. School funding in the state of North Carolina is among the most complex in the entire state. I've actually been asked twice to go speak to the General Assembly about school funding and how that might be changed because the nature of school funding in our state is set up, so it creates constant tension between counties and school systems, between county commissioners and school boards, as county, as Board of Education members can't raise funds and so have to go to the county for that, but then they're making the decisions with the funds that the county commissioners are having to give, so it can create tension, which is again, one of the reasons we feel quite blessed to work with our commissioners because of the relationship that pre-existed my arrival, and I hope that we've done a good job to continue to build upon that with our county. We know that our local budget has to be adopted before we have a state budget. There have been years that our state budget wasn't approved until as late as November, and we start on July first, and students come in August, and so that's unfortunate. With the short session this year, I hope the state budget will be a little earlier than that, and as you know, hope can't be the strategy, so we have to plan for where we are. We have to ensure we're taking hiring into consideration with retirements that we may have, and so there's a lot of things that we don't know might happen. A perfect example in Buncombe County Schools was the statute to redraw electoral lines for the Board of Education. Sitting here a year ago, I had no idea that we would spend almost sixty thousand dollars to redraw electoral lines when it had never been mentioned by anybody in the town halls that we held, and I didn't know that it was something that was on the radar. Apparently, it was on the radar for a small group of folks, and I won't get on that soapbox. I'll simply say, from a budgetary concern, we had no idea that large expense was going to hit us, and it did, and we had to pay that bill, and so being very careful, being very responsible in our budgeting is so very important. The majority of state and federal funding, of course, is based on our average daily membership on our enrollment, and so I'll show you some data in just a moment on how that's doing. The unfortunate thing with that in a large school system with forty-five schools, if we lose twenty students, well, we could equate that to one teacher or one teaching position, but the truth is, we don't lose twenty students from second grade at Lester Elementary School. We may lose one student from twenty different schools in twelve different grade levels, and so you can't drop a teaching position, but you've lost the funding because it's associated with that daily enrollment, and so all of those challenges, and many of those are challenges we have every single year. And so as we look at the current landscape for Buncombe County Schools, one of the things that is the area second only to the mental health needs and needs for support of our students in our school system is the tremendous growth of multilingual learners. In the past, that's been referred to as ESL, or English as a Second Language, or EL, English Learners. They keep changing the acronym. It's currently ML, but we're referring to students who arrive in our school system not speaking English, and they sit down in front of a teacher who may not speak their home language, and the teacher is supposed to teach science or math or whatever it may be. And so we've seen this huge growth, in fact, since 2013. That population in our school system has grown sixty-three percent to the point that they now make up twelve-point-six percent of our total enrollment. That is a growing number throughout the school system and throughout Buncombe County. It's not limited to any one particular district, and as you've visited our schools, you may have heard our teachers speak directly to that because it's such a big issue and challenge for our teachers. In our school system, our EC population is thirteen-point-nine percent of our enrollment. The reason that's significant is the state sets an artificial percentage point to fund EC, and we're above that, and so all of that additional cost comes out of the rest of our budget, so it's unfunded from the state. In terms of our enrollment trends, these two graphs we've stacked on top of each other. That's the ADM for Buncombe County Schools, and it's stretched out, I guess so I could make the slide look pretty. I shouldn't have stretched it quite that far, but the enrollment, as you'll see, we've been on a negative trend, but since the last three years, that trend slowed, and actually, this is 2023-2024 projected, we're actually, for the last seven months now, just got month seven data, we're above last year, and so for the first time, going all the way back to thirteen-fourteen, our ADM is growing again, and so we're really excited about that and excited about folks who are making the choice to be a part of our school system. You'll also see how as the number of charter school students in Buncombe County, in the Buncombe County School footprint has grown, the funding flowing to our charter schools from the school system or through the school system has grown to this year, approximately eleven million dollars goes to charter schools for the students who choose to go there, and so certainly, that's a challenge.
Dr. Jackson?
Please.
I want to ask about.
Absolutely.
I had to take statistics in college twice, so trying to catch up with the math here. I can see in 2018, nineteen to today, the charter school funding has doubled, which is staggering to me, but proportionally, it doesn't seem to align with the enrollment trend on the graph above, like what's going on there in math?
It's based on, that's the local amount of funding that's transferred, and as our budget request was approved at higher levels, the percentage rate increases higher, and it's exponential when the local dollars comes in. That has to follow the student, so that goes out at a higher percentage rate.
So there's a truth there that when you give us more money, we have to give the charter schools more money, and so that's a piece of it. The other piece I would mention, Commissioner Sloan, so again, thank you for the question, is that a loss of ADM does not necessarily equate to a growth in charter schools because students may also be choosing private schools or homeschools. We have seen a growth in homeschooling in Buncombe County historically as well, and so both of those things could be occurring in terms of more funding available, so the funds go up, but also loss of enrollment to other areas other than charter schools.
Did I read somewhere where the homeschoolers in Buncombe, we are higher than most counties?
You did, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and we're working hard to encourage homeschoolers to be a part of our school system and considering how we might work in partnership either through virtual offerings. You may recall that we began the Buncombe County Schools Virtual Academy, which works really well for some families who might choose homeschooling because of personal schedules, whether the student's involved. whether the student's involved in maybe competitive gymnastics as an example, or whatever it might be. And so we're seeing growth in our virtual academy, and so we're hoping that may be something that homeschooling families will choose to be a part of. It's easy for us to find our charter school families because the charter schools have to report on a monthly basis, as you heard earlier, who they have. That reporting mechanism is not in place for homeschools. And so we try our very best to reach out to homeschooling families to invite them to be a part of us. But you're exactly right, Commissioner Sloan. As we move forward, thinking about our ESERS funds, so you'll see that in this current year, 128 positions have been funded through ESERS funds. And so 41 of those positions are actually ESERS positions. Then we have another 87 positions we were able to use ESERS funds to fund. And so part of our request is understanding all of the needs that these positions meet for our students, particularly in a school system that is making progress. We certainly don't want to go backwards. And as you look at this list of positions, things like SEL coaches, so social emotional learning coaches, who work with our teachers to help them understand when you see the more aggressive behaviors that you've heard of earlier, how do I address that as a regular education teacher in my second grade reading class? Having the coaches have been very important. Counselors, social workers, interventionists have been a big part of how we've seen the academic success, assistance, behavior assistance, ESL, we talked about, EC, credit recovery, et cetera. And so all of those positions equate to about $10 million, $10.6 million. In terms of the locally funded personnel, we have 638 staff members who are paid with local funds. Earlier, I mentioned the state increase that we're already anticipating of roughly 3.4% for our school system. We know that all of our staff receive the same salary or on the same salary scales, so that means that our increase for these 638 has to match what happens in the state budget. And again, we don't know if there will be a change to what's currently in the budget. Looking at a revenue analysis, you'll see that the lion's share of our funding comes from state funding, followed by local funding, federal funding, and then other specific revenues, which could be fines and forfeitures, grants, et cetera. This is skewed currently because the ESERS dollars are federal dollars, so we're receiving more dollars there. That will go away, and so we'll return to a more typical revenue analysis in the years to come. In looking at our expenditure analysis, you'll see here, 83% of our funds, that's typically 85% to 86% of our funds are spent on human capital. What we offer the citizens and community of Buncombe County is our faculty and staff. Our strength is our faculty and staff, the teachers and the people who are in our buildings. That's what we offer, and so our funds rightfully go to our human capital because that's where we make a difference in the lives of children and families. In terms of our requests this year, we've broken it down, and then the totals on the next slide. The first piece is a proposed increase to local salary and benefits of $3.3 million. It includes the state's already approved step increase and the average 3.35% in our school system increase for certified staff, a step increase and a 3% increase for non-certified or classified, or sometimes called hourly, staff. The retirement rate remains flat. The state said it may go down. I don't think anybody in this room believes that would happen, and so we're budgeting for it to at least remain flat. The hospitalization rate has increased significantly, as you see there. There's 680,000 in what we've termed immutable cost, which are utility cost increases. We've reached out to our utility providers to pick up that data. Our property insurance, we've seen a 178% increase in our property insurance rates since 2020, 2021. Inflation certainly is a big piece of that. And then this third area, request to maintain all services. These are the funds that we're requesting to maintain our staffing levels, which includes the counselors and SEL coaches, et cetera, that we just mentioned previously under the ESERS positions. I will say to you that one of the things that was important to me was that when the ESERS funds run out, that I not have to sit in front of an employee and tell them we're instituting a RIF and they no longer have a position. And we've been able to do that work. We're hoping the position will be the work they're currently doing, but we have a place using retirements and resignations for all of our staff. And so that's been important. We're going to be able to keep our folks in the system. If we can't maintain the positions, we'll be able to downsize into those positions. I will...
I'm sorry.
Please, no.
Just before you move on, I just had a question.
Please.
So on the property insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
That increases from 2021. What's the increase from last year?
It's been around 30% last year, 34%.
Okay. And then with the ESER part, I think the, with those ESER, is about 128 positions, was that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And 41 of those were new, and 87. So what were the 87 that weren't new?
We have 52 teachers, we have 15 assistant principals, and then we have 20 counselors.
Okay. And so how were those being paid for before ESER?
Local funds.
Okay. So what did you do with the local funds we were providing you? Because that amount didn't go down during that time. We were still giving you, we were increasing it during all that time. So how were those local funds being used?
If you'll remember back to 1920, we tried really hard to build back some fund balance to try to get to that board policy. So what is done, we've moved it out of local into ESER, and we are, we have built back up to right now 6.7 unassigned in the 22, in the 23, 24 budget. So that's how we were able to get any of our fund balance back.
Let me speak to that if I might. In our school system, our board policy calls for one month's operating expense. We had gone well below that in 2019, 2020. We are right now at one month's operating expense. And so as you're aware, when we have a capital project, we have to pay the funds, pay the cost, and then we're reimbursed. And so we have to have the cash available to then later be reimbursed, so that fund balance is very important. And so we've just gotten back to one month, so we're in a good place with our fund balance. I certainly know we don't have more than we need. We can make it on what we've gotten. And so we've been able to, through the wisdom of the school system, I believe, maximize the ESERS dollars while they were available to get us onto sound financial footing, to have one month's operating expense in our fund balance by using the ESERS dollars very wisely. And so I feel really good about that work. And so as you're probably aware, we do our best to braid our funding and use the funding in the way where we can maximize the local funding that we do receive in a way that we're not pushing too hard on what the county can actually provide. It's a great question.
I thought the state requires two months.
So...
Is that wrong?
No, sir. Well, I'll back up. So there's not a requirement for school systems' fund balance. There are lots of different entities, including the LGC, that would say, here's a good idea. But even then, the LGC doesn't give a percentage like they give the county or municipality. And so we heard earlier about the gold standard. I would love to have two months' operating expense in our fund balance to meet that gold standard, but there's not a requirement. It's a best practice. And so our Board of Education and policy said one month's local operating expense is what we're going to strive for, and we've had to work really hard to get back there. And so two months is the gold standard. It makes, this is where we all should be, but there's not a requirement from the state for what that would be.
And I'd like to clarify, ours is one month of local operating balance, not total operating budget.
Thank you.
Okay. So your fund balance is one month of the locally, local funding. And just a follow-up question on the fund balance, because I thought there was something that our county staff had worked with the schools previously around that fund balance issue and that we had made a recommendation to them. Was that ever? I thought I had heard that in previous years that we have worked with the schools and we kind of, because that they had larger fund balances, and so there was a recommendation not to have as much as they had in the past?
It's not ringing a bell.
Okay.
That was prior to Ms. Pender.
Okay. Okay. So there was that kind of conversation in the past because the fund balances were larger, and then there was a recommendation from the county to bring that down. Okay.
That is a true statement.
Okay.
That is not our challenge today, I'll tell you that.
Okay. Thank you.
There's another issue I'd like to make sure we're understanding. Our federal government also, we usually don't get our funding until up in December. So we have to, we have, you saw the percentage, most of that is payroll. And so we also have to use our fund balance to cover payrolls for those funding sources that have not been allotted to us. So we have a large amount of cash flow that we have to manage to keep up, to make sure payrolls are met, along with our capital projects not getting behind.
Thank you for all that clarification.
Absolutely. And so kind of finishing up the requested increase, earlier I talked about our multilingual learner services and support. That population has increased. I mentioned that 12% of our enrollment is our ML population, the total number. And so I really want to highlight this number. The increase from March of 2023 to March of 2024 is 448 students who've arrived in our school system just in the last year, who don't have English as their first language, many of whom can't speak English. And so certainly, that is a huge piece for us. And so this request of $2 million allows us to add staff to support our students and support our classroom teachers to be able to meet this growing need. There's also a request to increase our exceptional children assistance hours. They currently work a seven-hour day, so they don't work the full school day. These are students who are, have very great needs, and our teachers really need our EC assistants there for the entirety of the day. This is one of the items that really rose to the top when I met with staff members in terms of the requests they made, and you may have seen a request similar to this and some of the things that you've received. Then the final item is for additional counselors, social workers, and assistant principals. So adding three and a half counselors, 7.2 social workers, and two assistant principals, again, to address all of the needs you've heard in really the last two presentations. Our increase does include $3.5 million of fund balance used to budget our 2024, 2025 school year. And so very quickly, it's always exciting for me to share with you how the school community impact funding that the commissioners provide impacts our schools. And so very quickly, I'll show you at Irwin Middle School, we were able to add a presentation device and work so that at Irwin Middle School, when we have assemblies, they're able to utilize it. Our school counselor, Ms. Snyder, commented it was a great enhancement to the school, and we certainly appreciate that. At Estes Elementary School, we were able to add to the playground and then add to the surveillance cameras that monitor the playground. And so what you're seeing, there's a couple of pictures of our ability to monitor the playground, thanks to the community impact funding. At King Creek Middle School, we were able to add to, in their gymnasium area, a presentation screen, also for the same thing we use at Irwin Middle School for our assemblies, et cetera. And then at Woodfin Elementary, this is an example of braided funding. We were able to work with the town of Woodfin, who also provided some funding, some private donors and others, to be able to construct a beautiful playground at Woodfin Elementary School. That's available for community use in the evenings and on weekends as well. And Hall Creek Elementary School, we were able to add to the playground there, and so you can see some of that. Really excited about what we're doing at Black Mountain Elementary School. This work is currently underway, but we're adding an inclusive playground so that all of our students are able to go out on the playground and have equipment that's accessible to them. Our next work will be at Barnardsville Elementary School as we head out that way to work. And so again, I want to thank you for your generosity, not just for school community impact projects, but for all you've done for our school system historically. I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any feedback you might have for us. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Questions?
Yes, I was very excited to see your reading and math growth, as well as the graduation rate. That's excellent, so thanks for sharing that. And with the reading growth, can you speak more to what it is that you're doing within the schools that's really helping you to achieve that growth?
Absolutely. And at the point you've heard enough, start nodding your head, because I'll talk reading all day. I was an elementary teacher. So one of the things that we did, unfortunately, in the past as a profession, is we stopped teaching phonemic awareness. We stopped teaching phonics. We started embracing what was called whole language, where students were given good books, and we used something called a three-queuing system, when we would ask them, what does the pictures tell you might be happening? We realized that was not very smart. And so we've worked really hard in our reading curriculum, our language arts curriculum, to include phonemic awareness, to include direct instruction in phonics. And so every day, our elementary students go traipsing through vowel valley, and they talk about AEIOU and all of the different ways that A is pronounced regardless of, or in a word, and whether that's driven by the consonant-vowel-consonant rule, or consonant-vowel-vowel- consonant, et cetera. And so we've worked with adding hegemony. So every day in our elementary school, students are sounding out words, tapping them out, using their fingers or their elbows or their arms, being able to pull apart syllables. So we're being very intentional and very conscientious in helping students understand the rules of language in a way that we didn't do for quite a while. And so it is paying off in big ways. And that's thanks to our teachers who spend a lot of time, first, getting deep into the theory of reading instruction, and then the practical aspects of how do we work, how does that theory actually impact our students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade? This year, the state had intentions of moving that into middle school. With the change in state superintendent, we'll see whether or not that goes forward. The state has said, though, that their next area of emphasis will be mathematics, to do something similar in how we're approaching numeracy and numeracy literacy. And so like I said, I'd be happy to talk about what we're doing in our English, in our reading classes and elementary school level. But it's really, the biggest lever that we've pulled on is return to direct instruction in phonics and phonemic awareness.
Thank you.
So Dr. Jackson, can you share a little bit more about that? I've worked in the realm of adult literacy, specifically ESL, and that was how we taught our non-native English speakers.
Yes, ma'am.
The English language. And looking at your multilingual learners, how is that impacting their test scores? Are you seeing some, I mean, I would assume when you come in and you have very limited English, that taking a standardized test is going to be really challenging. So do you have some data to share about that?
Well, we can certainly pull the data we have. The, I don't want to say it's unfortunate. The truth is that we can't lump our ML students into any one category, because what we've discovered about our ML students is many of our ML students are arriving in our school system having no history of formalized education. And so by birth, they may be the equivalent of a second grader, but they've never been to school in their own home language. And so it's hard to put them in front of a second-grade reading EOG, and they didn't have even instruction in their home language. And so in our ML programs, we're having to help our students grow in their home language and in English, and it's a radical challenge for them. To say nothing of, we've talked about the mental health needs of students in general. Many of our ML students have gone through horrific conditions to go from where they were to arrive here. We've heard stories, well, I know of a specific story where a student arrived, she was pregnant, and it was not by choice, and it happened on the journey to here from where she came from. And so not only do you have, I don't speak English, you also have, in some situations, I don't have formalized schooling, or it's been years since I've had formalized schooling, and then you have the trauma that I experienced on the journey, and any trauma that might have predated that. And so we can certainly give you that data point, but the challenge is incredibly vast because it's more than just, I don't speak English. It's also the whole child and all the experiences they've had, but be happy to provide that to you.
Along those, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sloan, it's just, just a tiny bit deeper on the mental health piece, because we heard from Asheville City Schools about the mental health challenges that their teachers are experiencing in the classrooms. Can you share a bit more about what Buncombe County Schools teachers are experiencing, specifically in relation to the positions that you're requesting? And, you know, are you, how are you looking at placing social workers and additional guidance counselors and SEL folks?
Thank you for that question, and I anticipated it based on some earlier questions, so I pulled up the numbers. So currently in our school system, we have 1,101 students who are receiving school-based mental health therapy today. We have a waiting list approaching 200 students for that therapy, and so that's certainly a challenge. We have 714 McKinney-Vento students, which are homeless students, and all the challenges that they have and their families have that our social workers and our counselors help with. To date, we've administered 136 suicide assessments, students who were professing potential suicide ideation. We've... We've conducted 163 threat assessments, students who've made a threat of some sort against a school or against another student. And so we're certainly seeing those numbers, and those numbers are increasing for us. We're seeing in terms of, in our classrooms, aggressive behavior. At the beginning of the year particularly, four of our elementary schools had kindergarten students who had risen to the level of throwing furniture, and just incredibly aggressive behavior coming into kindergarten. We've seen behavior like that before, but not necessarily in the first few weeks of kindergarten, and we saw it in multiple schools across Buncombe County. And so we certainly have seen, you know, I know that one of the areas of emphasis in the strategic plan for the county is early childhood, and I commend that word, because that's the lever that makes the biggest difference. If you ask me what's going to make the biggest difference long-term, it's what we do birth through four, because that's where the difference is to be made. But we're seeing children come into kindergarten who don't have even the life skills that we traditionally saw, and some of that's just being able to get along, or just be in a room with other people without destroying the room.
You know, I was going to bring up, before I ask you a question, you bring back memories when you were talking about tapping on the arm. Well, I went first through eighth grade to Catholic school, and they did more than tap on the arm.
And I'll just say, it wasn't our teachers with a ruler, it was the students tapping.
They couldn't do today what they did then.
No, sir, they could not.
My question, I'm going to ask you this, is you mentioned the subgroups for kids and how they're doing. How of the African-American kids?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. Mr. Little, would you help me out? So I wanted to, and I'll send this to you, so you can actually look at this. So I've asked, I actually sent a graphic to Sam just a little bit ago, as you were asking that question previously, so that we could pull it up on the screen. What we're seeing, I mentioned the, our, this, so looking at this graphic, what we're seeing is our end-of-grade state assessment for reading performance by subgroup. And so, yeah. And so I'll just point out, this is our African-Americans, so certainly there is an achievement gap with our subgroup. But what I see, and what you'll see in the numbers, is the growth of our African-Americans actually outpacing our other subgroups. So we are seeing growth there. I know that, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I know that we're not, any of us are going to be happy until there's no achievement gap. What we see, and what is no surprise to you, is we have an achievement gap on the first day of kindergarten, which again points back to why I believe so strongly that birth through four years of age is where we make the difference. Because if academic outcomes is a race, we know we have some students who start at the starting line in kindergarten, some who may start ahead of the starting line because of the experiences they've had before they come to school, and many students who start well behind the starting line. But the race starts, and it goes on every single day, and so we work hard to help them catch up, and we're seeing that growth. And among our African-American students, we actually see a higher growth rate for them for this data. But I will send this to you, so you can see our data by subgroup. The data that I was mentioning, so many of our ML students are in that gray line, which is our Hispanic line, and so you'll see that growth is a little flatter, and a lot of that has to do with ML students, which kind of also goes back to the question that Commissioner Edwards asked about, how we're seeing the state assessment results for our ML students. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
How many languages do you have in your school system now?
It's at the point, it's well over 100, and we almost lose track of how many languages it is, but I'll get that actual number for you.
Because I know it's been for a long time, talking to some of the schools.
You said over 100?
Over 100, yes, ma'am.
Am I correct in thinking that per school subdistrict, you have one elementary school that teaches Spanish as a, as a second language?
At least one, we would love to grow that. So you're referring to our dual-language program? It's an immersion program, and in some cases, for some students, a native Hispanic speaker, the dual-language immersion program might be a good program for them. And so individually with our students, we look to see if that is a possibility. Primarily, though, it's set up for English-speaking children to go through that program. We've been able to grow that through middle school now, through the Connectionis program. We actually just had what's called Apple testing, not the word "Apple," but A-P-P-L. I could not recall what that would stand for on the spot. But the Apple testing measures the outcome of those students who've gone through the program, and they're testing out of our high school Spanish classes because they're doing so well. And so that program is a strong program, and in future years, I'm hoping we'll be able to request funding to grow that program. As you know, our request far outstrip our ability to meet the needs, and so that's certainly a request, but it doesn't rise to the level of a formal request today. But that is a very powerful program in our school system. Thank you for highlighting that.
I wanted to ask you to, I guess, speak to more broadly your thoughts on your enrollment trends that seem to be, I don't know, better than I would have thought or argued.
Absolutely.
Absent the data. But I guess, just to the dual-language program, do you think that is a draw for parents and students?
I do believe, I believe the dual-language program is a draw. I believe our incredible arts program is a draw. We've just finished, well, actually, this weekend, we'll finish musical season, so we've had an incredible musical that I would put against most Off-Broadway productions in our schools this weekend. By the way, anybody who wants to see Mamma Mia, it's at Owen High School. As an ABBA fan, I would encourage you all to be there. Our arts program is certainly a draw. Our athletics program is absolutely amazing across the school system. And so one of the challenges I gave our staff, Ms. Thorpe and our administrators will tell you, that I asked them to share their social media posts, their professional posts, about what's going on in the school with each other, because we have to tell our story. When I talk about Buncombe County Schools, or our public schools, Asheville City included, as the best choice, it's because of the things we saw that Dr. Furman presented in terms of those successes. But if a parent who wants the very best for their child isn't aware of what's available, they may choose something else not knowing. And so we've tried to make sure we're doing a great job of telling our story. And so the social media traffic we see seems to mean that, seems to indicate we're doing what we need to do. And so I think that's a part of it as well. The school system, the offerings of the school system are the reason people make the choice, but we have to do our part in making sure they're aware of the choice they have to make. And so I appreciate all the efforts of so many throughout the system doing that for us and telling the good stories.
And with that, Dr. Jackson, I enjoy being in the schools often, and I see that high engagement, and there's a lot of really wonderful things going on in our schools. And it speaks to the graphic you showed earlier with the teacher appreciation and satisfaction, because when I go in those schools, that's what I'm seeing and hearing as well. So that ties in directly with that feedback that you were receiving.
Thank you so much for sharing that. And again, I want to, as we get to the end, and I'll stay here as long as you'd like me to, I just want to echo back to where I started, which is how much I appreciate our commissioners and county staff and community leaders being in our schools, hearing directly from our teachers and seeing directly, because you do, as a commission, invest a lot of money in our school system. And I want you all to be able to say, I know we're getting an incredible return on investment in Buncombe County Schools, because I've been there, I've talked to the students, I've talked to the teachers, and I see what's happening on a daily basis. So thank you all for doing that.
All right. Thank you so much for the detailed presentations and good dialogue.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think that lunch is here, so I want to suggest we take a break and then finish out with the county presentations and discussion.
Let's get started again. So, John, I just want to...
So, we're gonna wrap up on the education discussion. And so this slide displays the year-over-year local current expense funding of our K-12 partners. The green portion is the base amount of funding from the previous year. The blue represents the unrestricted revenue growth rate, which the county developed for use in fiscal year 19 as the basis for the annual appropriation needed for our public school systems. The gold portion of the bar represents the allocation above and beyond that over the last five years. This has been nineteen point nine six million dollars over this period, with only a one penny increase in the tax rate devoted to schools. We have previously shared that we cannot sustain funding at this level without increases to revenue, meaning the property tax rate, or cuts in other service areas across the county. Using the unrestricted revenue growth rate this year of a three point five two percent would result in an increase of three point nine nine million dollars, which would be equivalent to a tax rate increase of three quarters of a penny per one hundred dollars of assessed value.
John, can I ask you a question there?
Yes.
So, can you go over how you come up with the unrestricted revenue rate? And then typically, I think with that, that we wouldn't have a tax increase if we were just going with the unrestricted revenue rate. So then can you explain why you're saying we'd have to have a tax increase if we were only going with that?
So, the unrestricted revenue growth rate is our unrestricted revenues, mainly property tax and sales tax, which we don't have to, which are not restricted to a particular purpose. There's a handful of other revenues, as we've discussed previously, that are also in that. So, we look at the total of those revenues over the prior year and come up with that percentage. Additionally, we've seen that our intergovernmental revenue, our restricted revenues, are down. So, our overall revenue growth rate, as you've seen year-over-year, is not three point five two percent. But here, as we've given above and beyond those gold-yellow portions that you see there, that is twenty million dollars that's still in the budget year now for this year, where we've only increased revenue to sustain that by one penny, which is about five point three million dollars. So, you can't reduce your allocation to schools in any given year. But we don't have ongoing revenue to sustain what we have there, that almost fifteen million dollars above and beyond that we've given in prior years.
So, just to follow up to make sure I've got this. So, typically, if we were just going with the unrestricted revenue rate and adjusting with that, that would not be any kind of recommended tax increase that was needed, typically, in that case, right? But you're saying...
Typically, yes.
Typically, so you're saying because of the FY24, so go over that again. It's because of that amount that then it's impacting us this year?
But, well, the cumulative, the cumulative gold pieces. So, yes, there is the FY24 amount, but then there was four point four million dollars above the unrestricted revenue growth rate in '23. And then you can see in '19, '20, and '22, we also gave a little bit above that unrestricted revenue growth rate. So cumulatively, that total is just under twenty million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions about education?
My question is, if we didn't raise the tax rate seventy-five cents, what would that give them? You know, I have a problem every year, and we can't keep sustaining that either. Every year, we're raising taxes for schools. And, you know, nobody, I know how important schools are, but we gotta think of the taxpayers too.
The budget I presented to you thus far does not have any increase in allocation for schools. It would remain flat.
John, what is that amount that's included in our budget now?
Yes.
What is that amount?
What is that?
It is just about a hundred eighteen million dollars for K-12 schools. That's the two school systems.
So, you're saying what currently is in the budget that we're looking at is not this three point five two percent?
It's that green, it's the green portion of the FY25 budget. So, the green portion is what's currently in the budget. The blue portion would be the unrestricted revenue growth rate on top of that.
So currently, it's the twelve point eight million?
No, ma'am, so...
That was, that was the increase, sorry.
From last year, right. If you will recall, we did not include any growth this year because y'all wanted to wait before you added a growth. What is currently included in our general fund budget is a hundred and eighteen million for a K-12 system, which was what we funded them last year. So, when John says flat, it is inclusive of that twelve point eight, that whole bar from 2024. So, right now, it's a hundred and eighteen million that's split between Asheville City Schools.
One thirteen, sorry. It would be one thirteen, it would be about one eighteen, one seventeen, and one eighteen if we did increase the revenue growth rate.
Okay, thank you for making me look at that better. So, one thirteen for the two schools. Yes, and so if we do look at an increase for the schools, what we're proposing would be a three-quarters of a cent increase, and that would only be three point nine nine million. If you choose to go above that, that would equate to a higher tax increase.
Any other questions about this slide, or you got some more slides to show?
This is, this will wrap up education so far. Finished with education, we can move on.
Okay.
So, the county makes investments in our community by providing funding for projects and grants. And staff collaborate with stakeholders to make recommendations on which applications of funding would be the most effective use of that funding for the county community. You have specific committee recommendations in your packet. Rachel Sawyer, our strategic partnerships director, is here to discuss some of our community investment programs, followed by Matt Kable to discuss affordable housing. If you have specific questions about awards, I do have other staff available for questions.
John mentioned that across Buncombe County government, we have a portfolio of various community investments. These are essentially, and largely, grants to nonprofit organizations in the community. Affordable housing works a little bit differently than that in that the recipients and the financing is handled differently than nonprofit grants. We will go through each of these quickly. And what I'll say in summary is that this work represents multiple departments. So, Health and Human Services, Justice Services, Parks and Recreation, Planning and Development, and Strategic Partnerships are reflected here. We have a website, buncombecounty.org/grants, for anyone who is following along and wants to learn more about any of these investment programs. We follow the Buncombe County Resolution on Nonprofit Funding and work together across these departments and across these programs to ensure that we are responsive to the needs and opportunities in the community, as well as compliant with that resolution and various other laws or regulations that might apply. And, of course, carrying these programs out in a way that's aligned with the county's goals and values, with particular emphasis on integrity and accountability within the program and equity. The Early Childhood Education and Development Fund, the total funding amount being recommended for FY25 is just north of four million. And that, I wanted to point out, does include a carryforward. The commissioner has made a choice previously to establish this in a multi-year fund. So, the allocation amount is the per resolution contribution that we would add to that multi-year fund. And then there's an additional forty-five thousand that's being carried forward from FY24. The Early Childhood Committee has largely focused this year on workforce, which is their highest priority, as well as stabilization within the field of early care and education. The ESAR funding cliff that our education partners talked about previously is also relevant within the space of early care and education because of one-time federal funding that is sunsetting and potentially impacting our childcare and early education providers. So, they're coming forward with those recommendations. We also have a grant program called Isaac Coleman Grants, named after, excuse me, a civil rights leader in our community. And these are grants that focus on racial disparities and increasing equity with focus on jobs and education. These are three-year awards. So, heading into FY25, the recommendation from that committee is to award the same group of five organizations for their second year. The Tipping Point Grant Program is a one hundred thousand dollar grant program focused on community resiliency. These are community-based projects. A lot of times, we see smaller, newer, more grassroots organizations participating with us as partners in this grant program. The projects have to be something new or a new aspect to an existing program. Strategic Partnerships Grants, the commissioners are well familiar with this. It's sort of the flagship funding program in that it does focus across all of our strategic plan areas. And the total funding amount in that grant program is nine hundred thousand. And the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee has recommended nineteen organizations for funding. Community recreation grants are ninety, the recommendation is ninety-nine thousand three hundred twelve dollars. And this is operated through Parks and Rec in promoting recreation and fitness and related outcomes in the community. These also tend to be in that five or six thousand dollar funding range. And so lots of different organizations in diverse areas across the county and smaller organizations are able to partner with us through this program. And then we have aging funding. This is one that does include pass-through. So, the acronym on your screen, HCCBG, is the Home and Community Care Book Grant Funding that comes from the federal level through the state. And we have a local allocation as well. So, with the five hundred thousand dollar recommended amount for Buncombe County to continue our local allocation or local contribution to that, it totals two point two million dollars, and this is handled through Health and Human Services. We also have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, sometimes called JCPC. This is pass-through funding as well that comes from the state level. And the total amount for fiscal year '25 is six hundred forty-four thousand. And these grants are focused on reducing and preventing juvenile crime.
All right, and I'll jump in here. The Affordable Housing Committee finalized its review of applications just a couple of days ago, actually on Tuesday, and made its recommended allocations. That committee makes recommendations using general fund dollars through the Affordable Housing Services Program, as well as the Affordable Housing General Obligation Bonds. The first slide reflects the recommendations that came out of committee regarding the use of existing Affordable Housing Services Program funding. So, we are in a multi-year fund. There are certain projects that aren't realized that have received prior allocations. So, we do have carryforwards sufficient to support seven organizations and ten projects, the purposes of which are to promote, preserve, and prioritize affordable housing. And the committee also made a recommendation to utilize twenty-five point eight million in general obligation bond funding. These are focused on the construction of units for low and moderate income households. And this would support six projects from six different organizations.
I have a question here for my colleague on the affordable housing, since I haven't watched the meeting, so I'm not sure of the discussion. But I'm curious, on the bond one, on the LDG, if I'm reading this correctly, that's around sixteen or over sixteen million there that we're putting toward that one. And I'm just curious...
No, that's not, that's not right.
Okay, but I'm looking at it wrong?
I think you don't add the two numbers together, right? It's just the, it's just the last number.
Okay, I was looking at FY24 and then FY25, and so it's not...
So, we approved funding for it last year, and we basically reapproved funding for it, but that's not in addition to...
Okay, because I thought, wow, a hundred and eight thousand a unit.
And that's the same with the Buckeye Community too, we approved it last year and then...
Yeah, just look on the right... Yeah, just look on the, the right column for the actual.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, much better. And, and I am just curious also on the, well, I guess any other questions I can follow up. That, that was the main one.
So, is this where we should talk about this? On this topic, okay. Yeah, so, um, you know, I think, I think part of the question we need to think about as a commission, now that the, you know, we have these voter-approved bonds, and we are, as, as Matt pointed out in the information we have here, you know, we are, we are rapidly putting those funds to work. You know, we were, I think when we were looking at the bonds, there was some concern, like are there, are there going to be enough high-quality projects proposed in Buncombe County to actually invest the funds to meet these, you know, ambitious goals we have for construction of new affordable housing? So good news is there's been a great pipeline of projects that have come forward, and some of these are really, you know, are really significant projects, like the LDG project. These two new projects that came in this year, this Pine Lane Project and this Rocky River Project, these are both these four percent li-tech projects that produce over a hundred units each, and they are big investments because of their size, but for every dollar we're putting in here, we're leveraging like three or four of these li-tech dollars to these projects. So it's, it's doing, you know, it's really doing what we would want it to do. You know, one of the, one of the challenges we face is that we are in this, you know, this high-interest rate time in our country, which definitely impacts the financing cost for these projects, right? Because all these developers go out and get a loan for the gap funding of the project, which they have to repay over, you know, twenty to thirty years. And, and so those interest rates are, it's, it's, it's just making the projects a bit more expensive, all other things being equal. But, you know, you know, just, just in this year alone, the total number of units, six hundred and twenty-eight units, all of these projects are built. You know, that's, and that's really kind of amazing, right? I mean, that's like in, before we had the bonds, the biggest thing we were getting done each year was typically one nine percent li-tech project, which is usually around sixty units, right? Like, and there would be, Habitat would do some things, some other developers might do a few projects too, but I mean, that, that was sort of where we were at, and now we're looking at this ability to really bring online a significant number of great new projects, and they're in really good locations in different parts of the, of the county. Some of them are in the cities, some of them are in, one of those, one of the new ones is in Woodfin in a really walkable area. The other one is in South, South Asheville on a transit line, all really, really good projects. I think from the budgets, from the budget standpoint, part of the question to think about going forward, both for this year and for future years, is the role of the bond funds and the role of the Affordable Housing Services Program funding. Because before the bond, before the bonds, we just funded all of this just directly out of our budget, right? And now that we're really looking at the ability to, to focus on financing a pipeline of new construction projects, you know, the bond funds are really showing the, the ability to, to scale up, right? But we're also seeing that because we have these really good projects coming in, you know, we're going to get the forty million dollars in voter-approved bonds. It won't all be obligated this year, but it's going to be, it's, they probably, I mean, they, depending on how the decisions we make next year, they could theoretically get obligated next year or over the next couple of years. It just depends on sort of how the commission decides to allocate the remaining funds beyond, beyond this. And we have, of course, been spending a lot of time talking about these, these important developments being planned on Buncombe County property, Berry Road, Cox Avenue. And so the immediate question for us in this budget year is whether to continue to appropriate funds to Affordable Housing Services Program at this level that we have sustained, you know, for, for a long time now, right? We don't have to invest that much funding this year in order to support the good projects in front of us because we also have bond funding. But we also, as we look, as we look ahead, and we knew this when we, when we, you know, brought the forty million dollar voter-approved, the voter referendum forward, we knew that that was not going to be a sufficient funding to meet the twenty-thirty goals we set up, right? We knew that there would need to be other sources beyond that. And now that we're implementing these projects, like that's becoming, you know, more, you know, we kind of see specifically how that's going to be playing out. So I guess I would sort of summarize my perspective on this as I am, I am open to the idea that we don't need to continue to appropriate the same amount of funding into Affordable Housing Services Program as we have historically, but if, but we, if we're not going to do that, we do need to start making more specific plans for what the additional funding sources will be beyond the currently approved voter, forty million dollars of voter-approved bonds. On the, on the two county properties, we have been discussing the concept of using limited obligation bonds as a financing source for those two projects because it's on county-owned property. At the committee level, we have had sort of just very preliminary discussions about the idea of a, the prospect of a future bond referendum that would also go to the voters at some point, you know, in a future election cycle. That could be twenty twenty-six, it could be twenty twenty-eight. But at some point, that, that would be another financing option to help us meet our twenty-thirty goals. So Avril, do, you have some updates you could share with us about the research around the ability to use, to do the limited obligation bonds for the county properties?
Yes, sir, and I'm asking Melissa, our finance officer, to join us. She's been leading on this research as well, so she would give you an update.
Hi. So as we look at the, the goals that we have for affordable housing, and specifically the two projects on the county-owned property, and we also look at the legislative restrictions for the two different type of bond sources that we have. Your GO bonds, which would be your voter-approved bonds, that's going to be your path of least resistance and your lowest cost of capital. So while we continue to, to research all of the different intricacies and state statutes tied to the use and deployment of limited obligation bonds, it, it's an option, but again, there's some differences in the way that you can use those two different types of bonds, and that we're still looking at how to build that capital stack to deliver those, those projects to our community. So we want to make sure that we're doing that, both in, you know, the goal to, to meet that, that goal for our community, but also to do it in a very strategic, fiscally responsible way. And so looking at all of our options to make sure that that recommendation from a financing perspective is very strategic in nature.
Here's a cost of capital, what's the general difference between limited obligation and general obligation bonds?
Well, there, a big difference between a taxable and a non-taxable, okay?
Right.
And the GOs that we're issuing currently for affordable housing, they're taxable, okay? So you're going to see a very big difference in your interest rate because your GOs are going to be a little over five percent, whereas the LOBs that we're about to issue, which are primarily for school and projects and county projects, those are non-taxable, and they're going to probably end around the mid-three, three and a half percent. Okay, that's the difference, not between GOs and LOBs necessarily, but between a taxable and a non-taxable, okay? So you are going to see a difference, let's say taxable to taxable, apples to apples. You're going to see a difference because your GOs are going to carry the triple-A rating, whereas your LOBs are always going to be one notch of your credit right below that. So we are triple-A rated by three different rating agencies, and then our LOBs are the double-A plus, okay? So they're going to be, gosh, I hate to speculate, but you're going to be about fifty, seventy-five basis points below that.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at it, we need to do a bit more research on it to make kind of a final confirmation of, which would hopefully be, yes, that could be an option that the commission, the county could select to finance the developments on Berry Road and Cox Avenue, but we're not a hundred percent there yet. We need a little bit more time to confirm that.
Yes, and it could be a combination of, of the two different types of, of bonds to accomplish that.
Right, okay. All right, so, so Commission, I guess I would, I would just, just kind of, go ahead.
Can you jump to that slide on the, the drivers then? Because, so Brownie, we had some strategies that we wanted to talk through before we actually asked them.
Okay. You can just hold on that thought.
So this does bring us back to balancing our fiscal year twenty-five budget. In our budget retreat in November, I explained how we were seeing increasing levels of service demand across the county over the last several years. We talked about how inflation has increased the cost of our operating expenses and maintenance and repair of infrastructure. I also discussed a shrinking revenue outlook for sales tax and near-governmental revenues. And you heard from Jay in March how revenues are dipping for government entities across the country. One of our leading indicators for local economic activity is our occupancy tax revenue, and that revenue continues to trend below where we saw it two years ago. Buncombe County is not in isolation when it comes to reduced revenues and inflationary expenditures. So per your request regarding what other local governments are doing in this climate, we conducted a survey to ask that question since the last time we met. Over fifty county governments responded, and the top three strategies for balancing budgets were strategies around personnel, deferring capital projects and maintenance, and increasing the tax rate. In terms of strategies for personnel, we have whittled down requested positions from one hundred thirty-three to thirty-three, twenty-five of which will be budgeted in the, in the coming year, eight EMS positions we are only asking for the headcount and not budgeting, as those were prepping for the opening of an EMS base in fiscal year twenty-six. Twelve of these positions have some offset from revenue or expenditure contracted expenditures. Three are in the solid waste enterprise fund, leaving ten positions proposed to be fully funded in the general fund. Another strategy is not to budget for vacancies and turnover. We are budgeting salaries at ninety-five percent, calling ten million dollars from the salary budget. Our cost of living adjustment calculation of four point eight nine percent is seven point one million dollars of the salary ledger, compared to an average of four point three two percent of North Carolina entities. There are some potential strategies available with a reduction of the COLA.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
So the North Carolina average, that's what's, and is that, and then is that based on the fact that the inflation in the other counties has been lower? Or they're just planning to invest less in this item, or is it that the actual cost of living is in fact lower?
Well, this is a aggregate of many entities. We do have a two-year average formula, so.
So that can, we have last year's high numbers still baked into ours.
Yeah.
But what you're saying here is that in the FY twenty-five, the North Carolina average county is planning on a cost of living adjustment of four point three.
Some local government, there could be some municipal.
So, so that point, Brownie, some are higher than that because this is the average and some are a little bit lower. So this is the average across our state. As John mentioned, we, we are looking at a two-year average, but if you look at our CIP since we pulled these numbers since the last few months, Jay was telling me that they're actually higher now. So inflation is actually a higher percentage than it has been when we pulled these numbers for December.
We've also staggered start dates for the remaining positions in the budget across the fiscal year, creating two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in savings in this proposed budget. Do you have any other thoughts about personnel strategies?
Well, thanks for doing this research. There was also something that you were sharing, you were looking at peer counties and how we compare to them around, I think was it education, capital, and salary? There was something I saw in the packet about that.
We do have a slide on that one too.
Oh, you do?
Yes, on the, on the spending for capital?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's in the appendix of this, of this PowerPoint, and I believe we also shared that in one of your handouts.
The one point too, Terry, that you had asked about was what percentage of our budget was on personnel? We also did that research, and that's also in your packet as well. I believe the average was around forty-four, it was forty-four percent. It ranged. It ranged, it ranged, okay. But that's also in your packet as well, and we are in, within that range for Buncombe County.
The, the headcount quantity here is, it's, it's shrunk since even our last meeting, right? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
No, sir. You mean the thirty-three positions?
The thirty-three, yeah.
Not since our last meeting, a few weeks ago.
Do you have questions about personnel?
Any, any thoughts about where you want us to land? We, we did this research at your request around what would a COLA look like at different percentages? So I want to get your feedback on where, where you want to go, if, if any, if you're willing to share.
And we, and we, so if people have thoughts, feel free to share now, or we could also just go through all the different options and then kind of open it up, so a discussion on different, different options.
So our strategy has been to defer capital. We have reduced PGO expenditures by two million dollars by deferring projects to future years, evaluating existing projects and their status, and reallocating funding. We are utilizing debt funding. All debt-eligible capital projects will have costs spread over the life of the asset via debt funding. Additionally, we will seek debt funding for public safety vehicles. We have also begun a plan to lease our general government vehicles rather than purchase with cash, and this will result in eight hundred thousand dollars in savings in fiscal year twenty-five. Specific questions about capital? This brings us to where our second pass budget now sits, with four hundred sixteen point five million dollars in projected revenue and a recommendation of no more than twelve million dollars in appropriation of fund balance, against four hundred forty-two point three million dollars loses with a gap of thirteen point nine million dollars. This does not include any additional increase in funding or revenue generation for K-12 education. This would take a two point six cent tax increase per one hundred dollars of assessed value to balance. So there are some other budget drivers for discussion. You've heard from Matt Cable and, and Chair Newman about the Affordable Housing Committee's just allocated three point one million dollars to projects. Additionally, this past Tuesday evening, you heard about awards of two projects from the newly established Clean Water Fund. Given that these projects have just been awarded and work will begin next year, there could be a pause on the community investments in these two areas. We could also not fund for one year our other post-employment liabilities, that's almost two million dollars. These costs escalate over time, our preference is to regularly fund them, so we would not want to do that for more than one year. Additionally, we could reallocate ARPA funding of one million dollars for revenue replacement. So as one penny of the ADVAL property tax generates around five point three five million dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, all of these items would save one penny on the tax rate.
A question on these, with the, the affordable housing, like what we were just seeing, that's going to be awarded in the Clean Water Fund, you're not suggesting not doing those awards, but you're saying put a pause on it for this coming year and not make additional awards out of those two, is that, I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, the awards that you have in your packet would proceed, but we would not, we would pause in fiscal year twenty-five for those two items.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
So if we choose to change the tax rate, two point six cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value would close the gap on county operations. Additionally, increasing education funding by the unrestricted revenue growth rate of three point five two percent would take an increase of point seven five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So we are looking for your guidance on the additional drivers and how you would like to proceed.
All right, thank you, Chair. All right, Commissioner. So we have a million dollars of the broadband funding that could be, that could not be invested for the broadband, that can be reallocated to the budget, right?
It could not be invested because the CAB RFP is not back yet.
Yeah.
But, so yes, we are recommending that we could use that, and then we would, we would have about three, about three million dollars left over that we could still spend for broadband.
And what they're looking at with the CAB process, and Tim can update us if he needs to, but there, there's been an ask for them not to require as much of a match. but there there's been an ask for them not to require as much of a match from the county. So therefore, that's one reason we feel like this will be available.
They haven't made a decision on the match yet, so. Yeah, but we're hoping to have that hear from that soon.
And then the in the the OPEB, OPEB is just a one-year option, like that's sort of a one-time thing that could be done, right? Okay. This would be the year to do it.
Well, if we go with this page, that's one cent, right?
Yes, sir.
So we still have a ways to go.
A little bit over that, yeah. So so I'll I'll give my two cents on the affordable housing piece now. So I would I'm open to the idea of changing the amount that we do in the annual appropriations for Affordable Housing Services Program, you know, in in this year, as well as, you know, frankly, for sort of future years. If the county, but I would only support that if the county is making pretty clear commitments to like the future financing strategies for the pipeline of projects. And I think even though obviously we're in a, you know, this is a tight budget year, I think the experience we're gaining from the implementation of the voter-approved bonds is showing us that like this is a really effective way to build the affordable housing our community needs at scale. And frankly, you know, just doing a couple of million dollars through an annual appropriation is just not a very effective way to do what our community needs to be done on affordable housing. These two projects that the county is working on on our own public land, you know, these are significant projects. If the limited obligation bond is kind of confirmed to be a viable option to build those projects, you know, we should compare the pros and cons of that versus like a GO bond, but it certainly seems like it's a really interesting option to look at. And then and then I think just based on, you know, the way the numbers are playing out, the number of units that are going to get constructed through the bond funds that we have today, even if we do do limited obligation bonds for the county's developments, you know, and it's it's pretty easy to see how there will be a need for the voters to consider some additional bond funding between now and 2030 to meet the goals that we have. So I'm, I would say I'm open to the idea of a reduction to annual appropriations to Affordable Housing Services Program. But if we're going to do that, I think we need to be able to say to the community and show them that we're not reducing our commitment to affordable housing. In fact, we're significantly increasing it, but we're just replacing it with a more effective and scalable and sustainable financing strategy to do that. So that's sort of my perspective on the overall issue, and 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 it's why I would be open to doing this this year. But if we're going to do it, I think we do, as a commission, need to spend some more time talking about our alternative plans for financing new investments in affordable housing over the next three to five years during this budget cycle so that it's not, this isn't seen as a step backwards, but just, you know, our our strategies are evolving and frankly, there are going to be better strategies and and even more significant investments over time. So kind of my my two cents on that. Do other folks have thoughts on that piece or any of the other items on this slide?
Well, at that point, when we look at the debt service, when you did the general fund expenditures by category and looked at it with our peer groups, when you look at that, we're doing very well compared to with our peer group of being low on our debt service. So I certainly think we should explore that opportunity that you're discussing and and make very clear that we are continuing to actively work on affordable housing in our community. So so I'm open to that discussion.
Yeah, Brownie, I'm I'm open to it, too. And any other way we can kind of, to a point you made earlier about how we weren't sure if developers were going to come, like they did because we made it, we made it clear that we were interested. We continue to do that, I think there'll just be more and more interest. I do want to, so I can't agree with you more, but I do want to speak up for some of the other smaller things, comparatively smaller things we fund with those dollars, like emergency repair and the new start programs that create innovation within our community. And there's 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 other things that we fund with those, that we currently fund with those general fund dollars that I think are are meaningful. They're not, well, certainly the emergency repair helps maintain our housing stock. But kind of beyond that, arguably, it's not as meaningful towards increasing our our quantity of housing and affordable housing like these other strategies or these Lytech strategies, too. But it's important still.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, our committee is making some real strong recommendations to continue to grow that piece this year. And just to, as a reminder, did we definitively conclude that that area of work cannot, we cannot utilize bond funds for that work? I thought maybe we did conclude that and then maybe we reassess that question.
I can't tell.
But it's been a while since we talked about it, so I don't 100% remember. Michael, do you or does anybody recall? Is it, the question is, is it permissible to use affordable housing bond funds for emergency home repair capital work? Like, it is a capital project, but it's different than like in construction of a new home or a new, you know, apartment building. Okay. I honestly don't remember. So let's let's look at that, you know, but that is very important. I don't think anybody would want to see us get out of that.
Yeah.
I think we allocated more this year to home repair than we ever have.
That's true, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, when we can keep people in their housing, that's.
Especially our aging.
Yes, definitely.
Community as well, it really helps address that for our older community.
We had two, we had also had, we could talk about this all day, but we had two new groups enter the into the market of doing home repair for the first time, so.
I will comment on the Clean Water Fund. You know, I would, we just started this program, right? Our committee spent a lot of time talking about this. And, you know, and the it's not, no, it's not a huge amount of money. It's a pretty modest program. I would say I think the two projects that we recommended funding for and have approved funding for, they are really good projects. You know, they're not going to, you know, this level of investment is not going to like, you know, dramatically change water quality in Buncombe County by itself, but they are very good investments and I think are great projects. So if we do, you know, part of part of the concern would be if we do not do another solicitation in this coming year, I would certainly speak in support of continuing the program going forward, you know. And so to look at this, I mean, because I think our idea is that this is like a long-term recurring program, right? But, you know, we are in a tough budget year, and so I would be open to, you know, making an exception to it for this year, but I would hope that that just become a precedent, but just, you know, kind of a one-time exception. So other thoughts or comments on these items from any members?
I think you framed it well. There's no real precedential value in this. It's just a unique economic circumstance we're in, didn't expect this on the budget. At least my commitment along with y'all's is that we're going to keep pursuing all of these, but hard year, hard decision.
All right. Do we want to, April? I was going to say, do we want to go back to any of the other slides to look at them? I mean, the capital stuff is sort of, I don't think you were looking for guidance on that. That's kind of already been baked in, right?
So before we leave this slide, am I hearing consensus on yesterday Clean Water Fund? That that would be removed for this year as a as a one-year pause? Yesterday, ARPA reallocation funds, yesterday, OPEB. And Brownie, you said you're open to it, so what is that?
I'm I'm open to it. What I would ask is that we get, I know the the staff needs some additional time to kind of finish the research on the limited obligation bonds, but it sounds like that it's probably realistic that we could get that that additional research done during this budget cycle so that we could, what I'd ask is that we have a chance at one of our commission meetings to talk further about the future of the affordable housing, basically kind of project financing strategy so that we can, you know, firm up what our plans are for investment in the county-owned properties and have some additional discussion about other financing options, which is most likely a GO bond at some point for voters to consider in the county. So I think we basically just need to look at our 2030 goals, look at what we've learned so far from the significant allocations we've made already from the bond funds to kind of look at like, what do we need to do to meet these goals? And what's our plan to do that? And in that context, I think if we we have a good plan, you know, I'm supportive of changing the annual appropriation. So could we just schedule this as a follow-up discussion when we're ready to do that? But in during this budget process?
As you know, our budget recommendations will come on the May 21st meeting because we need to have public hearing at our first meeting in June. So we have two budget sessions that we need to have strong decisions made so we can have a balanced budget for adoption and actually for the public to have public hearing on. So it will be at your very next meeting. I'm looking at the staff so they know that we need to have our research done because it is now time of the essence for us.
I understand. So would it be possible for us to, so May May 21st seems too soon maybe to do that follow-up discussion? Or is it not too soon? Because I was going to, we really just have May 21st and June 4th would be the two options, right?
So we will push really hard to get to May 21st, and if we happen to slip to June 4th, but we need to come to you on May 21st with a pretty solid response.
Yeah, a week after that.
We'll assume that since you're smiling, Melissa, that means yes, easy.
She's smiling, so she won't be crying, have all that.
If we're ready to do it on May 21st, let's do it on May 21st. If you need, if you if you need some more time, let's do it on June 4th.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Agreed.
So you can go back now to the, be on the other slide that had a conversation with beyond the salary personnel.
Cola situation.
Yeah, let's go back to the COLA list.
Is there's like a current policy, right? So is that the 4.89 that I'm seeing?
Our current policy and personnel ordinance has been about the two-year calculation of 4.89%. Yes.
That says of the CPI at the end of December. So and the CPI has increased month over month since December.
So I'm not sure if this will be helpful or harmful, but just offer some thoughts on it. I guess this is in a broader conversation we've had about looking at pay for county employees in general and retention specifically. Could you give us any thoughts or give me context as having done this one or two cycles now? I'm curious, what is a thought mostly retention that we are eminently facing losing people if we don't go with that number? Or is there a negligible difference between 4.8 and 4.32?
I don't know how to answer that question. We've been working really hard for retention and culture to make sure it's not just always about pay, it's about the whole package. But we do know that employees do look at their final paycheck to govern where they want to work. And during the break, we were talking about one of our neighboring counties telling us that whatever you do, we're going to try to come above you. So we know if we go below what employees are expecting around the COLA, that we do risk that. We do have that risk that we might lose some employees, especially the ones that are doing the transaction work every day. But but I really can't tell you what the, I'll be speculating to say that we would lose people. I don't know the answer to that. I do have heartburn, and I will say that. I do have heartburn at dropping that COLA. And the reason for that, last year or two years ago, when it was really high inflation and we saw other people around us paying a higher CPI, we had just gone into the two-year phase, and we told employees we understand that everybody's paying you higher, but our our two-year policy is this, and we're going to stick to our policy. So as soon as we get a hard budget year, we're saying, oops, we're going to change our policy. So it does give me some heartburn that we were going to look to do that again after we just told them, here's the change. But to Brownie's point earlier, it is a hard year, and I do, we do understand and staff understands that we have to make cuts all across the board. So so we get that.
And when we look at the salaries and benefits for our peer groups, we were, what we were at 41%, which was kind of toward the top end of that range of our peer group, right, with the 26 to 44%.
Say that again, Terry.
On page two, they did a, they looked at our peer counties. They looked at it around salaries and benefits, our debt service and our education and salaries and benefits. Buncombe County's 41%, which is toward the upper end of our peer group.
So so what that is 41% is telling you the percent of our budget that goes to personnel. We really have, most of our work is people, is a people organization more than anything else. So yes, ma'am, that's what that is reflecting. On the very next top of the next page, you will see that our peer groups for last year were 2% to 11%, and we were at 7%. So we were right on in the middle there.
With the COLA.
For COLA. But our 41% is really around the percent of our budget. And we are a people-heavy organization. We really don't have a product that we produce. It is really about people. So that's what it was for.
But it's comparing us to our peer groups, which are all people.
Right, which is 41%.
So.
Well, I'll just say, in general, I mean, I appreciate the very challenging position that we're in and what staff is doing and looking at all these different aspects. And I would just ask us to continue looking at this as we go into May 21st because I just, I feel we need to continue to get that right down. I think it's just, that's where I am.
We are, thank you for that, Terry. As you know, when we started this, the first pass budget, we were about 28 million or so apart, and we've kind of brought that down a little. We started, I guess, the first year, first conversation was closer to 50, and we've cut that and we've cut that. So we have been diligent in trying to bring that right down. Our goal when we start the year is always to have no tax increase. That's kind of where we try to start. And then we start looking at what the needs are and what we have to fund, especially around our mandated services. And so I hear you that you want to get to zero. So if if we agree, and Brownie, I guess we will come back to talk about the 2.34, the affordable housing piece. So that would be, that's the biggest line on there, quite honestly. But we will come back and talk about that hopefully on May 21st, latest would be June 4th. Are there any other items within our budget that you can think of that we need to be talking about as options to put on the table for discussion?
And with the the one you mentioned, deferring capital, you feel you've looked at everything around that one that can be adjusted?
I'm looking at the staff, yeah. I believe we've gone through all deferred capital. There's, there's not any new stuff that we're doing for next year, unless it's something that we could truly put off and borrow over the life of the asset. So, yes. We know ambulances are important. You heard this morning, it takes about three years. So that funding, even though we're saying we're going to buy it, we don't expect to pay for it for a couple of years. So we do want to go ahead and get the order in, but there's no cost in our budget for those things.
Yes, and definitely the new staff positions, I would say those that are very critical. But if there's any that are not critical for this year, which I know, I know you've been whittling it down. Very aware of that. But if you feel there are any of those other positions that are not critical, take a look at.
Yeah, and with the staggered start times on most of those positions, there could be negligible impact to the budget at this point.
I just want to ensure that we are being as fiscally responsible as we possibly can before asking thousands of homeowners and property owners to bear the brunt of this for Buncombe County.
The only other kind of just comment I would make at this time, and this is kind of more for sort of like future budgets, future planning, but and and this all goes with the caveat of, you know, we have to approve a budget every year, and we can't tell future county commissions what to do and that kind of stuff, right? But I do think that, you know, and this applies to the county's public employees as well as our education partners, employees, and sheriff's sheriff's office employees. I really, you know, I really just think there could be a lot of value and benefit to kind of looking at like the next several, you know, like instead of just looking at, this is our plan for compensation for the next 12 months, really looking at what, where are we trying to get to over the next several years? You know, and think about having a three-year plan that lays out, like here's where, like we we know we want, you know, we have, as this as this slide shows, we've really significantly increased investments in education. I know that, since John has explained, that's a big part of the reason we have a lot of pressure on our budget this year is because the increases we made last year, you know, they all, those recur every year. It's not just a one-time bonus. It's a permanent increase to the base budget, right? But, I mean, I still feel really good about that we did that. I think it was very, a very good decision. I hope that the state does do, you know, significant pay raises for teachers this year, right? Which will put more pressure on our budget. Which will put more pressure on our budget, but if the state's doing it, that's, that's great, because it needs, you know, the state absolutely is underfunding our public schools. So anyway, just, but just to say, I think the idea of developing a two- or three-year budget plan for what we're going to invest in compensation for our public employees would be really valuable. I think it would give the the school systems, you know, more predictability in what's going to happen over time. I think it would give the employees more certainty about what's going to happen. And if we said, hey, you know, we're going to, our plan is going to be that we're going to, we're going to do, we, no, no one knows what the cost of living inflation is going to be over the next three years, but we could say, like, we want to commit to having a COLA in each, each budget. And plus, do, you know, here are the pay raises we want to invest in for our valuable public employees over the next several years. And if during that period of time, you know, if we agree to that, our education partners agree to that, then there, in all likelihood, will be some tough budget years during those times. But at that point, if we're saying, like, hey, we need to make an adjustment to our tax rate to implement this really well-thought-out plan that we've agreed to, I think our community would support that, because they would say, you know, they have a good plan, and they're sticking with it. But when we're just doing this on a 12-month basis, it's a lot harder to kind of see where we're, where we're trying to get to. So I know we're not going to do all that during this budget process, but my hope is that once we get through this budget process, that that is a conversation we can start to have with our partners and and internally within the county organization as well. We did talk, we did talk with the schools about that, about that idea in some informal meetings, and and I think they liked the idea. Part of their feedback was, you know, the city schools were like, we're working on this strategic plan. We'd like to get through that before we, we think that will help inform, you know, how they would engage on that. So they had some good reasons they didn't want to kind of start that process earlier this year. But once we get through this budget process, you know, that, there might be the space to start having those kind of longer-term strategic discussions, so. I think on the, on the COLA, it sounds like, I don't hear, you know, people saying, like, we, I think everyone's saying we need a little more time to think about that, right? So so I don't know that we're going to give guidance, either like, yes, we're absolutely doing this, or one of your alternative plans today, but it sounds like we all want to have some more time to think about the different options on that piece.
And as you know, please reach out, please call. I will contact you again anyway, if I don't hear from you at certain times, because we we are marching really quickly towards the deadlines that are laid out for us by our state. So we, I will be reaching out to get your input and thoughts on what you saw today, and if there's any additional cuts that you have questions on or things that you can think of, go ahead and let us know that as well.
I do just want to say that the financial outlook we brought to you last, last time, when we went out a couple of years, that's the most comprehensive we've done that, and you didn't see all the backwork behind that, but we are, we are beginning to do all of that for, much, much of that forethought of what it does look like down the road for us. Because we, yes, I agree, we can't just go into planning for the county's budget one year at a time.
Thank you, John.
Amen to that.
All right. Anything else we need to cover while we're here today? Okay, well, appreciate everyone's help in putting together the presentations and information. I thought all the presentations were really good and very informative from the county and the fire districts and the community college and the schools. So appreciate all of that information, so.
I agree, Bob. I want to thank the staff. Y'all have done a good job. I feel a little better now than I did coming into this. Let's keep going.
All right, meeting adjourned. Have a good afternoon.